State Rep. Mike Gottlieb on Chair of the Broward Delegation. I want to thank you all for coming and attending. And I want to do something a little unusual at the beginning of our meeting and thank Andrea and Sidney for setting this up for us. They do a wonderful job.
Great job.
We normally wait till the end to thank them. And um, thank you Senator. And also I want to thank the MPO for hosting us today. Before we get into the meat and potatoes of today's meeting, I'd ask for everybody to please rise as Representative Marie Woodson leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And is there a flag? Yes, right there.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And Ms. Knowles, if you would please call the roll. When the Senator's done harassing you.
Good morning. Senator Polsky.
Yeah.
Senator Book, Senator Thurston, Senator Farmer, Senator Jones, Representative Lamarcas, Representative DuBose, Representative Omfroy, Representative Honchowski, Representative Daley.
Eric.
Representative Jenny, Representative Geller, Representative Woodson.
Yeah.
Representative Robinson, Representative Fabrizio, Representative Bartelman. Thank you. Representative Barrero, Vice Chair Williams, and Chair Gottlieb.
Here.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
We can begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on Brian Kletka. Is Brian still in the room? There he is. Formerly of one of my cities, David. Brian, welcome and thank you as the working on behalf of the MPO for having us here today.
Okay, great. Good morning, delegation. It is an honor to have you here once again in our offices. Once again, I'm Brian Kletka. I'm the Director of Transportation for the MPO. And I just want to welcome you, try to make you as comfortable as possible. I don't want to speak too much because that's really your job as our delegation representing Broward County. And due to your great work, you allow us to do our great work. So, welcome and thank you.
Thank you. And once again, thank you for hosting us. With that, right on time at 10:15, we have our great property appraiser, Marty Care, who is going to give us a presentation. And as a former state representative, we appreciate everything that you do. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I take my mask off if I'm here? Is it permitted?
That's up to the MPO's rules. So, I believe if you're presenting, you likely can. I'm being told you can.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Yes, you can.
Woo! Well, thank you all so much for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. First, before I talk about just a few of our priorities and you know, what we think would be great for the people of Broward County, I want to thank you all for the great work that you do. As you know, I served in the legislature one time, a long time ago. And I just know the work you all do affects every single person in the state of Florida. And I'm a little biased, but I believe we have the best delegation in the state of Florida. So, thank you all so much for your awesome work. And before I talk about our priorities, I also want to thank you all for something that I think is just wonderful. And in particular, I want to thank Representative Woodson and Senator Polsky. Because last year, they passed an amazing bill that everybody up here voted for. Actually, it passed unanimously out of the House and the Senate and was cosponsored by many of the folks up here. The governor signed into law and the law and what it did was it actually helped thousands of seniors throughout the state of Florida. And to give you an idea, in Broward County alone, it helped 28,000 seniors, which is a great thing. And here's what it did. As you know, there are so many seniors that struggle every single day to make ends meet. And there's a very important exemption called the low-income senior exemption. It basically means if a senior makes under a certain amount of money each year, which is usually around $30,000, they get basically an additional exemption on their property taxes. And it's money they can put in their pocket and they can make ends meet better with it. And the problem, though, was every single year, they had to reapply for it every single year. And so, every single year, you would have a significant amount of seniors statewide, for some reason or the other, wouldn't reapply for the exemption. Maybe they forgot. Maybe it got lost in the mail. During COVID, maybe they weren't home. Maybe they were in the hospital. And so, every single year, there would be thousands of seniors statewide that would basically be left behind. And seniors that struggled would then have to come up with more money to pay their property taxes. And Representative Woodson and Senator Polsky passed House Bill 597 that now going forward makes it an automatic renewal for anybody that had it the year before. And I think it's a great thing. Not only is it ensuring that every single senior will get this very valuable exemption, but also it helps seniors as well who were, who actually did file for their reapplication because they get very stressed out. And throughout the year, they call us and they worry that we would have got their application. And so, this did a wonderful thing. And something that I think is very, very cool was, I hope Representative Woodson doesn't mind me talking about this, but her father got to see her elected to serve in the Florida House of Representatives. And she had a conversation with him before he passed on where he said to her, Marie, I'm very proud of you. I really want you to work hard to protect our seniors and to do good things for our seniors, our most vulnerable population. And she did. And Marie passed this bill along with Senator Polsky. And what I know for certain is that her dad is looking down right now exceptionally proud of her because he did exactly what she, he asked her to do, and that was to look out for our seniors. So, thank you all so much for that excellent bill. I think it's going to be wonderful for Broward County seniors and seniors statewide. Now, this year, there are really two bills that were really focused on, that I wanted to bring to your attention, that I hope everybody here supports and votes for and cosponsors if you feel comfortable. Because I think they're great bills and not only will help Broward County's population, but also population statewide. The first one is House Bill 13 filed by my dear friend, Representative Gottlieb. And the Senate bill, its companion bill, is 154 filed by Senator Anna Maria Rodriguez. And this bill does a very, very important thing. It raises the amount of the value that a widow's exemption has from $500 in value to $5,000 in value. Now, let me explain that. If you're a widow, a widower, or even if you're a blind person or a person that's totally and permanently disabled, every single year, you qualify for a $500 value exemption. Now, that's not $500 off in your property taxes. It's basically $500 of value that is taken off the value paid taxes on. So, it saves you right now about $9 a year, which as you know, is negligible. That really doesn't help a whole lot of people who are struggling, widows, widowers, and other folks. And so, what Representative Gottlieb would like to do, and I think it's a great thing, is increase that value to a $5,000 value exemption, which makes it better. And now would give widows and widowers and other folks that would qualify around $100 in savings every single year. And that's a big deal for people who struggle. If you think about this, $100 could be a week's worth of groceries. Or maybe it's a month's worth of gas for a senior who's a widow trying to get to and from the doctor. That's a big deal and it's a great thing. And in Broward County alone, it would help approximately 39,466 people right now that we've been able to identify. That's a, that's a great thing. And something I think is also very, very important, too, is the fiscal impact to the cities, the county, to the school board is not great compared to the amount of people it can help. And when I say not great, I mean, it's not a very big fiscal impact overall. And let me give you an example. The city of Fort Lauderdale, as you know, is the biggest city in Broward County with the biggest population. They also have the biggest budget. Their budget is approximately $180,89,105. And if Representative Gottlieb's excellent bill were to pass, they would basically lose out of their $180 million budget, approximately $65,000 in revenue. That's usually the price to, the amount to hire one or two employees where they could help thousands of people that struggle every single day. It's an excellent, excellent bill. And I really hope that it passes. It's House Bill 13 that would help a significant amount of people here in Broward and statewide. So, thank you so much, Representative Gottlieb, for filing that awesome legislation. I appreciate it. The second bill that I wanted to quickly talk about has also been filed by Representative Woodson and also Senator Polsky. And I think this is an incredibly important bill that fixes a big inequity in the tax system. And it's House Bill 71, that's Representative Woodson's, and it's Senate Bill 568, which is Senator Polsky's. And it was really brought about as a result of the inequities that became apparent after the tragedy that happened in Surfside with the collapse of the condo. And here's what it showed. Right now, we value all property on January 1st of the tax year. So, when your tax bill comes out in November, it's based on what did the property look like on January 1st? So, take Surfside as an example. If the people in Surfside were to get a tax bill, it would be what did the condo look like on January 1st? So, they would get a full tax bill even though a tragedy happened and the condo collapsed. So, this bill would fix that inequity. Oh, and before I talk about that, the governor actually signed an executive order that with regard to the Surfside issue, that basically suspended the collection of property taxes, but also asked the legislature to come up with an idea to fix this problem for the future. And that's what this bill really does. It fixes that terrible inequity for people who have lost their most important possession through no fault of their own. And here's the way it works. A property is valued to get on January 1st. If it's destroyed by calamity and became uninhabitable after January 1st, the November tax bill will basically be an abatement. You would get an abatement for each day that you weren't able to utilize the properties. Let's say the property was destroyed in June. Your tax bill, the building portion of it for a residential property, would reflect for the building every day from January 1st to whenever it was destroyed in June. And then after that, they would get an abatement of property taxes. Basically, they wouldn't pay for the value of the property for the rest of the year. It's an excellent bill that really just shows that people should pay their fair share. And what I think is wonderful about this, this is why I really appreciate Representative Woodson and Senator Polsky for doing, is this isn't something that's unprecedented. They didn't just say, this is what we're going to do. They actually modeled this excellent bill after other bills that had already been passed by the legislature for similar tragedies. So, let me give you an example. In 2018, the Florida Legislature passed a special law that gave property appraisers the ability to provide tax abatements to peoples whose homes were destroyed by Hurricane Matthew or Hurricane Hermione. And so, that was very fair. This is modeled exactly after that. And now it would apply to anybody. So, for example, if somebody's home is destroyed by lightning, they would get, they would be able to apply for this and get a tax abatement. It is an excellent bill that fixes what I think is a terrible inequity in the system and gives people the opportunity to have some, you know, to be able to save a little bit of money during a very difficult time. So, I really hope that House Bill 71 and Senate Bill 568 pass as that would be a great thing for the people of Florida. With that said, those are really the two bills that we're focusing very heavily on this year. And I would love to see them pass, would love to see your support. And again, I just really appreciate the great work that you all do on behalf of the people of Broward County and the state of Florida. Thank you all so much. Is there any questions I can answer, Mr. Chair?
Um, yes, I have a question.
Of course.
When my bill gets referenced in Tallahassee, since you did such a wonderful job explaining it today, will you come in and explain it to the committee?
I would be honored. Actually, you know what? It would be, if you would have me, I'll be there in a heartbeat. And we'll bring our staff with us as well. You know, at the end of the day, I really believe these two bills are so important for people. Your bill, for example, as you know, and you brought this up to me, I didn't even think about this before we spoke about it. When you're a widow, you basically lost somebody you loved. Maybe they were seniors. Maybe both were on social security. All of a sudden, their income gets cut in half. Your bill is so important because it really gives people, and many people who are struggling, the ability to put a little bit more money in their pockets. So, I will be there in a heartbeat. And Representative Woodson and Senator Polsky's bill, I'll be there in a heartbeat as well because I really do believe that right now, there's a huge inequity in the system. I mean, think about this. If the governor did not give, did not sign an executive order that basically suspended the payment of property taxes for the Surfside families and victims, think about how terrible that would be. Next month, each one of them and their estates would be receiving a tax bill based on what the property looked like on January 1st. So, I am very, very committed to helping pass these bills any way I can. I will be there in a heartbeat. Thank you.
My pleasure. I know we all appreciate your passion. And I know that Representative Lamarcas has a question or comment for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Property Appraiser, I think that is a great suggestion, by the way, by the sponsoring member to bring you up there because you always want to use all the resources you have and the tools in your toolbox. You left a pretty good reputation in Tallahassee. I hear it very often. First of all, I just want to, I want to thank you for a lot of the things that we worked on as, at the County Commission and with respect to additional exemptions and especially for our seniors. Having a mother who was widowed at 23 years old and moved to Florida, that's, I think that's a great bill. But I do have a really serious question, and that is that you spoke highly of working in the legislature. Would you like better, the legislature or the County Commission?
Ooh, that's such a great question. You know, I'll refer to you because you can also answer that question as well. So, actually, you know, I'll tell you this, and that's, I really appreciate that.
I don't want to put you in the spot. You don't have to answer.
No, no, it's okay. Actually, I'll tell you my thoughts. I really appreciate everything that you do as well. And, you know, I think everybody can appreciate this. I have loved every single place I've gotten to surf. I love being in the legislature. I love serving on the County Commission, and I love property appraiser. But I'll tell you why I love the job I currently have the most. When I was in the legislature, as you know, you do some wonderful things for the people of Florida. You pass big bills that affect everything from education to juvenile justice to healthcare, anything you can think of. And it really helps a ton of people. But when I was up there, sometimes you're just so far away from the people. You know you're doing really good stuff, but you don't always see it take shape because you're very far away. The County Commission, as you know, we got to serve there. Broward County is bigger than 13 states. It's big. And you're making decisions for the port, the airport, you're passing great ordinances, but you still feel sometimes like you don't get to meet everybody you get to help. And the job I currently have, I love it because it's very tangible. Every single time I get to tell a senior, hey, you know, I know you're having a difficult time, you qualify for the senior exemption. I get to hug them. Or I get to go to a veteran, I get to say, you know what? Because of your unbelievable service, you're an American hero. Because of what you did, you no longer have to pay property taxes. It feels so good. And I wanted to bring that up because every single day, when I put my head on my pillow, I just feel good because I feel like I helped somebody that day. So, I've loved everything, but I love this job so much as a result of that. So, thank you. That was my long with the.
Appreciate the work you're doing. And number one, I'll end with this. I know you spend plenty of time in my district like the other eight that you didn't get to before. And you leave a lot of goodwill behind, and I hear it from them.
Thank you. Thank you, Chip. And thank you for the great work you do as well. I appreciate it.
He knocks doors everywhere, including in Rep. Marie Woodson's district. And I know she has some questions or comments for you.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Marty, thank you so much. Let me say that you are the best property appraisers in the state of Florida. And I know we have some great ones. But the time, the work that you put, you give 100% to our seniors in Broward County. You are a state representative, you understand the issue, and you work with us in order to make sure that we bring about the changes that we seek to do. So, we really appreciate you from the bottom of my heart. I say thank you to you because there is not one time that I reach out to your office. You were on vacation and I reached out to you for this bill. You were all the way in Memphis, I believe, and you took the time to call me back. So, I appreciate the work that you do, you and your team, Kelly and Miller. Thank you. Broward County has really a great one. And you as our property appraiser, and I cannot wait to see what the future holds for you. So, thank you, Marty.
Oh, thank you so much, Marie. And thank you also for the great work that you do. And I always say this to Marie. Marie and I have known each other for a long time, and I think she is doing an amazing job. Actually, her entire class is doing an amazing job. Christine, everybody that was elected together. And one thing I'm just praying for is, you know, everybody here knows Marie has a wonderful daughter named Kelly, which I never forget because my wife's name is Kelly. And I met Kelly when she, oh my goodness, when she was in middle school, I think. And I was so impressed. And she has gotten so far and done so much that my dream in life is if I can talk about my daughters the way that Marie talks about Kelly, my life will be complete. But Marie, thank you for all you do as well. Definitely.
Thanks again for coming here. We really appreciate it. And as Marie said, Marie just endorsed you for your next campaign. We don't know what that is. But, and we do appreciate your wonderful staff coming and the support that they give us as well. So, thank you for coming here. And everybody should know, I was so excited to hear from Property Appraiser Care that I forgot to make our opening announcements. So, thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful day.
So, I should have made these at the beginning, and I do apologize. Please silence your cell phones. Microphones and headsets are live at this meeting. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. We do have a large number of speakers on the agenda today, and we do, it is important to us that we get to hear from everybody. So, we're going to try to limit everyone to two minutes. I will cut you off at the two-minute mark, and I apologize for that. So, try to be clear and concise. In, restrooms are located out this way behind the elevators. Your mask should remain on unless you are at the podium speaking. And with that, our next speaker was supposed to be Sheriff Gregory Tony, and he is not present today due to illness. So, we're going to move into our public hearing comments. First, on our agenda is Catherine Ragonese, who is virtual, I believe.
Yes, good morning. My name is Catherine Ragonese. I am a voter and a mother of five children. I am an advocate for criminal justice reform. My oldest son was sentenced to 15 years in the Department of Corrections for a drug-related offense after being drug-free for two years and eight months, just four months shy of being PRR eligible. I have provided copies of this egregious law for your review. Under this heinous law, anyone who commits any offense within three years of being released from a state correctional facility is subject to a mandatory minimum sentence day for day. It's not a judge who has been given the authority to impose this mandatory sentencing, but solely at the discretion of the prosecutor, who has the option whether or not to mandate the PRR ruling. My son is very intelligent, charismatic, and caring. He's always loved to read. And having an above-average vocabulary, he was bullied by his peers. He became addicted to drugs at 16 and also attempted suicide several times. He was arrested at 18 and sentenced to a two-year prison sentence, even though we asked that he be sent to a faith-based rehabilitation facility that my husband and I had been trained at for six years and then spearheaded an overcomers group in our community for substance abuse addiction. I believe had, had he been allowed to be rehabilitated rather than incarcerated, he would not be sitting in a prison cell right now. He has a family who supports him. He has a degree in paralegal studies that he began in college and then completed while incarcerated. If he were to be released today, he would come home to work with his father in our family business and raise his six-year-old son who he doesn't even know. People change, and no one stays the same. Are you the same person you were 10 years ago? Laws need to change. Twice in recent years, legislature has reduced sentences after recognizing they were too severe. That is why I'm asking you to seriously look at this PRR law and make changes that will mitigate the negative unintended consequences of harsh mandatory minimums. Florida prisons are overcrowded, unsafe, and collapsing as expressed by Secretary Mark Inch before the Senate Judiciary Committee in February of this year. We have an answer to this crisis that will ensure the safety of Florida residents and reduce the $2.4 billion expense to incarcerate people yearly. Since its inception in 1997, PRR has not made Florida safer, but in fact, has caused recidivism to rise. So, I ask you, will you please help make this possible by sponsoring a PRR bill this session? Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ragonese. I'm a criminal defense lawyer. I understand the fight that you're going through. If you wish to talk more about that, please contact me in my office. And I know that many of my members share the same feelings you do about some of Florida's draconian sentencing laws.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we're going to have Lorraine McBride from Step Up for Students. And I do, while she's coming forward, I do apologize in advance if I don't pronounce somebody's name correctly.
Good morning. I'm Rhonda Dry. I'm here for Lorraine McBride. We brought a family this morning to tell about the scholarship story. Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, everyone. Hello. My name is Marty Florida, and we live in Pembroke Park, me, my daughter Elena, and my husband. I want to tell you how helpful Florida Tax Credit Scholarship helped our daughter remain in a wonderful school during family health crisis. When Elena was in her son district school, she was bullied and had a hard time finding fitting in. We decided to switch her to a private school, which approved that it was a good decision. Right now, she's attending to Bishop's MacArthur High School, exceeding academically and taking honor class, AP class, and an essential class. The essential program is an advanced academic opportunity offered in that school to students who performs an exceptional level. She was selected on her, after her grades. We love this school because it offers good education, a mixture of faith, high-quality education, and amazing program. However, last year, my husband was diagnosed with cancer. And because of the cancer treatment, he couldn't work for a couple of months. So, that's when we discovered this scholarship. Thankfully, I found this scholarship, we found this scholarship, we applied, and we were approved in perfect timing. It allows Elena to keep her school and her education. It's not for a scholarship, it's just, it will have to interrupt, she will have to interrupt her learning at that time at MacArthur. We are so grateful, the Tax Credit Scholarship and other, like, it exists to give family, like many more options of our children's education, particularly times when you are needed the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, not seeing any questions. We appreciate having you here. Thank you so much for your time. Our next speaker is Cindy Aaronberg-Seltzer with Children's Services Council of Broward County, and I believe she is.
I am here. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and the delegation, for making the opportunity for us to appear virtually as well as in person. It really makes things a lot easier. Thank you for the work that you're doing. There are several issues coming up that affect children and that I wanted to bring to your attention and also make you aware of some of the things that we are up to at the Children's Services Council. So, first, one of the big issues that I'm sure you know of are the federal funds that have made their way to the state but have not quite made their way down to the counties yet, both in the education and the early childhood realms. They're starting to move a little bit now, but they have the potential to make a huge difference, and we need to get the money into the community where it is needed. I want to thank Representative Honchowski for the work that she's doing in the mental health space. Of course, we know that our children have been struggling with mental health issues prior to COVID, and now they have become even more prevalent. And so, it is, the work of the commission is so important. I also wanted you to know that locally, the issue of trauma is something that we at the Children's Services Council have been taking very seriously for several years in partnership with Broward Behavioral Health Coalition and the United Way. And we have just approved something that we have called the Heal Trauma RFP, where we will have community mental health workers fanning out in some of our racially segregated communities that have experienced a great deal of violence in recent years. So, Pompano and the West Park area, we will be rebidding for Fort Lauderdale as we didn't receive a responsive application for that area. We're very excited to see how that works in the community. I also wanted to thank both Representatives Lamarcas and Bartelman for their work on kid care. We do need to be very careful as these fiscal cliffs start to hit our families with the increase in minimum wage. They stand, it's quite likely that they will wind up being hit with huge costs for several items that were subsidized prior to them hitting the cliff. I'm sorry, did I hear you say I reached the time?
I'm sorry.
I thought I, I'm sorry.
We do appreciate the great work that CSC is doing. Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the members? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much. And I know that your organization comes around and speaks to us all on an individual basis. We do appreciate the work that you're doing. My apologies for having to interrupt you.
No problem. Thank you, sir. And please watch out for Megan Toretzki. She will be there to visit the rest of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I should note that while Sheriff Tony is out sick today, he has been moved to November 9th's agenda. So if anybody wishes to hear from him, he will be present then. Next up, we have another, I'm sorry, yes, we have Sandra Vessi Einhorn, also virtual from the Coordinating Council of Broward County.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Broward delegation. My name is Sandra Vessi Einhorn, and I'm the Executive Director of the Coordinating Council of Broward. The mission of the C C B is to unite government, business, and nonprofit leaders in advocacy and coordination of health and human services in Broward. The C C B is composed of top executives of state and county entities from the public, private, and business sectors who are responsible for funding and implementing a broad array of health, public safety, education, economic, and human services in Broward. The C C B's goal is to better coordinate services and identify barriers that the ALICE population experience. ALICE, of course, is an acronym that stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained and Employed, and represents nearly 50% of Broward County residents. Currently, the C C B prioritizes the following cross-sector collaborative efforts: Affordable Housing and Homelessness, the COVID-19 Pandemic, the Long-Term Recovery Coalition, Mental and Behavioral Health, and the Prosperity Partnership. Your esteemed Executive Director Andrea Knowles participates in our C C B meetings, and our goal is to be a resource and a reference to you on issues that impact your constituents and the community at large. Our top priority for the last several years has been addressing the affordable housing crisis. In this upcoming legislative session, we encourage you to support the effort to update the Sadowski formula, allowing more dollars to be used to build new affordable rental housing, a top need. The current formula puts Broward County at a disadvantage and hinders our ability to address this growing emergency. Special thanks to Rep. Bartleman for your leadership on this issue. I also proudly serve as the Executive Director of the Nonprofit Executive Alliance of Broward, a coalition of more than 100 rock star nonprofit CEOs, some of whom you will hear from today. If you have any questions or would like more information, please let me know. Thank you for your leadership and your service, and good luck with the upcoming legislative session.
Thank you so much, Sandra. And I think everybody here realizes what a, what a housing problem that we're having in Broward County, especially as we come out of the pandemic, and we appreciate the work that, that you all are doing to assist us in that area. Any questions from the members? Seeing none, we're going to move on to Kim White, also virtual. Ms. White, you'll have two minutes. Thank you. Is Ms. White present? Kim White? Final call for Kim White. We're going to move on to.
I see you're on. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I think she just needs to unmute.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Good morning. My name is Kim White. I'm a registered voter in Florida. I am here to talk about a few things that I have learned in the past two years. Our Florida prisons, the state of Florida prisons is now making headlines. Not enough employees, too overcrowded, people sleeping on the floor, bad medical, too many bugs in vermin. There is also very little training so people can get a job when they're released. Yet, it seems like the judges give the maximum sentence for first-time offenders. If Florida had no A C, would you guys live here? No. I have learned, to my surprise, that out of 59 prisons in Florida, only 18 of them have A C. And the few prisons that have dog programs, they take the dogs out when the prison temperature is too high, but they leave the people in there. There is something wrong with this picture. Our state needs more training and rehabilitation. That's the key word. So people do not reoffend. A good example is the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office in Tampa. He has training and work, and everybody is learning something every day. Closing of the three prisons has caused people to sleep on the floor, which is mainly elderly people, and they're having to get up and down off the floor and sleep. I can't imagine having to do that. Our prisons need to be brought up to date facility-wise and education-wise. In listening to the meetings in Tallahassee, I hear legislators asking for more enhancements, not rehabilitation. As a society, we need to help people who make bad decisions, not warehouse them in dilapidated buildings. We are the, the Florida Department of Corrections proudly says on its homepage, "We are the largest state agency in Florida and the third-largest in the country." The citizens of Florida need to make sure the D O C has oversight such as a collaborative board, so it can also say, "We are the best-run facilities in the country." Please, I ask of all of you when you're in Tallahassee to support change for the good for the Department of Corrections. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. White, for your presentation. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to Kathleen Crampton, present in the room. And following that will be Susan Stein.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you very much. My name is Kathleen Crampton. I'm, I'm the Chair of Floridians for National Popular Vote. And I am here to ask you, and I know that three members here today, thank you for being here, are on the P I E committee, and it's, and the bill I'm here to talk about is sitting in front of you. So let me get on with it. The bill is for National Popular Vote. Representative Geller submitted it in the House. It's House Bill 69, as I say, sitting in front of P I E. And Victor Torres, Senator Torres, submitted it as Senate Bill 584. It's been referred to P I E as well as to judiciary. Let me move to the next page if you have the handout in front of you. You will see that this bill has been passed by 15 states, including the District of Columbia. What will this bill do? It will guarantee that the candidate who, who receives the most votes in all 50 states becomes president. It preserves the electoral college, and it does not require constitutional amendment. It will increase turnout in all states, and it will also get candidates to campaign in all 50 states and not just the battleground states where they currently campaign. You can see by looking at the map that the green states have already passed it for a total of 195 electoral votes. For those of you who remember your days in eighth grade when you did civics, you need 270, which means that only another 75 are needed. So you say to me, "Well, Mrs. Crampton, have you been up to Tallahassee yet? And do you think there's any chance of it passing there?" And my answer would be, "Well, probably not this session." But you ought to take a look at this thing, because there are other states that are likely to pass it, and we only need another 75, which would mean that Florida would become a spectator sport. So take a look. If you live in Florida, your vote is not as valuable as it is if you live in the smaller states. And you can see that at the, at the slide on the back. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. I will let you know Rep. Geller is on his way, and appreciate the work you're doing with him. Seeing no questions, again, thank you. And we'll move on to Susan Steinhouser, who is virtual with Rethink Energy Florida.
Hi, good morning, and thank you for holding this hearing virtually. Yes, my name is Susan Steinhouser, and in an official capacity, I'm here today representing Rethink Energy Florida, the Climate Reality Project, and the Sierra Club, all three of which have as one of their top priorities for this legislative session, the need to address climate change. The Sierra Club has two additional top priorities: land conservation and water quality and quantity. As for Rethink Energy Florida, as you can tell from the name, we advocate for the use of clean renewable energy. For the next 80 seconds or so, I'll be speaking to you, not as a representative of these organizations, but as a Broward resident who is both concerned, dare I say scared, yet hopeful at the same time. I'm concerned because I have a sense that most Floridians don't understand the basics of climate change, and as far as what causes it and the impacts it has had and will continue to have on our beautiful state. I believe that in order for our residents to support policies and programs that address the climate crisis, they need to understand what's at stake and why the policies and programs need to be implemented, especially if there's an associated cost. The reason I'm hopeful is that preparations are currently underway for the Fourth Annual Broward Youth Climate Summit. You may have seen the flyer in your inbox, in your email inboxes this morning. Last year was the first time the summit was held virtually, and approximately 4,000 students and teachers registered to participate. What's particularly special about this year's summit is that it will be part of a worldwide, a part of the worldwide climate teaching. So I am here today asking that a resolution be passed this year in support of climate education and resilience training. Ideally, the resolution would be in support of the worldwide climate teaching, but if the resolution needs to be more generic and not associated with a particular program, that would certainly be fine as well. And if anyone on this panel would be willing to sponsor such a bill, I would love the opportunity to work on it with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Steinhouser. I can tell you from the sunshine state, we would love to have a resolution such as that. Seeing no questions, thank you again so much. And we'll move on to Dr. Karen Gusta from the Florida Citizens Alliance.
Good morning, Chair Gottlieb and Vice Chair Williams, members of the Broward delegation. I represent Florida Citizens Alliance, a, an alliance of parents and citizens who seek real solutions to improve student learning for all students in Florida. This year, we are supporting a number of bills. I trust that you have received a copy of our legislative agenda. And one of the first bills that I'd like to mention has already been introduced as H B 5.7, S B 242. It's a bill that would prohibit the teaching of the divisive concepts of critical race theory and action civics in Florida K through 12 public schools. Secondly, we also strongly support the move for a universal education savings accounts for all Florida K through 12 students. We believe no child's future opportunities should be limited because they are consigned to an inferior school. Thirdly, given that Broward County schools have 50% of the books listed on the Florida Citizens' updated report on obscene and pornographic materials in Florida schools, we trust you will support our proposed Materials Harmful to Minors bill that would strengthen provisions of Florida's obscenity chapter 847 for minors. And finally, we are working with legislators to craft a bill that will stipulate the legal definition of instructional materials used in public schools means any and all materials presented to students. This would close the door to unwanted materials that some teachers feel compelled to bring before their students. Thank you for listening to us. We hope you will look at the other items that are listed on our legislative agenda and support these as they come and are presented to you during the Florida 2022 legislative session. Thank you very much for your time this morning.
Our pleasure, Doctor, and thank you so much for taking the time to address us. I do believe that one of my members, Senator Polsky, has some questions.
Thank you. Doctor, can you please explain or give an example of a sexually explicit book that is being used in a public school? And I don't understand what that is.
Doctor, are you there?
I muted. Sorry, I muted. Okay. If I may, I didn't hear who the question was coming from. I'd be glad to send you a copy of our report that fully identifies all of those books and the kind of material that is included in them that does violate statutes already in the Florida code. Thank you.
Yes, this is Senator Tina Polsky. Can you, since we're talking now, can you just give me a verbal example of what a sexually explicit textbook looks like? Describe it, please.
We have one that we've have identified. I, I regret, I, I don't have the report in front of me. I don't have the title, but it shows graphic illustrations of, of, of cartoon characters engaged in the act of sexual intercourse and as well as other ways of, of engaging in sexual activity.
And these books are currently being used in public schools?
They are available through the media centers. All of them have been found in media centers. As I said, there's 50, well, I didn't say this, there are 58 books on the list. 50% of them have been identified through a public records request that was sent to the administration, Broward County Public Schools Administration. And 50% of those books were found to be located in various school media centers in Broward County public schools.
And the books that you're describing that are explicit, is it only sexual in nature? Or is there something else that is at issue?
They also contravene the present law in Florida that would deem that marriage should be between a man and a woman. There are other concerns that we have about these that promote the notion that it's fine for teens to engage in sexual activity before marriage, which is also clearly stated as not the, against the law of the French statutes in Florida. So we have examined the books that are on the list, and they are found to be indirect, they contravene, they go against the Florida statutes. That's how we evaluated those books, using Florida statutes such as statute F, Florida statute, chapter 847 on obscenity, Florida statute 1006 on the duties of instructional materials, Florida statute 827, Florida child abuse statute.
You mentioned something about marriage between a man and a woman. Are you saying that a book, fictional or otherwise, that talks about a non-heterosexual relationship should not be available to our public school students?
If you look at the Florida statutes, the law clearly stipulates that marriage is between a man and a woman. So if there are books that state otherwise, then they should not be included or be appropriate. If parents want to show those to their children, if children are to be exposed to them through other means and other groups wish to promote that view, that is, that would be their choice. But at present, the Florida statutes deem that marriage should be stipulate marriage or stipulate or, or state marriage as between a man and a woman. And these materials, we believe that all instructional materials should be in accordance with Florida statute, statutory law.
Okay, my last question, and then I think there's some others from other members. Sorry, members, this is just really important. Can you define what critical race theory is and explain how it is being used in public schools K through 12?
In various, in a number of schools, there are programs that promote what are, what would be called equity programs, programs that focus on various concepts. Critical race theory as such is not being taught, but the concepts that it uses, such as instead of equality, we have equity. That's probably one of the most commonplace of the concepts that you find scattered throughout programs and curriculum. And so what does equity require? Equity requires that the same outcomes be required for all students. And we know that all of us have different God-given talents, abilities, and even the background that we come with, it's impossible to demand that there should be equal outcomes for all students. We seek for excellence for all students. Excellence in what students are provided as the instruction and the means of instruction should always seek to challenge students to achieve their fullest capacity, but to be locked into this term that, that critical race theory has promoted from, from the beginning, that we're, we're talking only about equity, always using, having the same outcome for every student. That's not only inappropriate, it's unrealistic.
Thank you, Dr. Gusta. Our resident education expert, Representative Bartleman, would like to ask you some questions.
Okay, so I just want to verify the list you're speaking of with the books. Is that the same list where you ask us not to have children read Harry Potter books?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Is that the same list that you give the school board every year where you ask us not to have students read Harry Potter books?
No.
That's the list that I've received as a school board member. You have numerous books on it, including Harry Potter and other books, so.
Again, I would refer, I would prefer, or be glad to send you a. Again, I would refer, I would prefer or be glad to send you a copy of the report. Our most recent updated report will be coming out shortly and I will be sure that you receive a copy of that.
And then why are you supporting a bill to teach critical race theory when there is no critical race theory taught in K through 12 education? And it's deceptive to people because you say to people, we're going to prohibit critical race theory, but that you know that the curriculum is sponsored by the Department of Education and everything that is taught is standards that's approved by the governor and critical race theory is not part of any of those standards. So why do you, I'm just kind of, I think it's unfortunate that you frame it that way to to the general public to get a rise out of them because you acknowledge yourself is critical race theory being taught in K 12 at this point? You've already said no, correct?
What I said was that you won't find the term critical race theory, but you will find the concepts that are used with critical race theory.
But that's not what your legislative packet says.
The divisive concepts of critical race theory. Yes.
I have to say that our school system is full of many different kinds of families. Our school system, equity is not about a minimum standard. It's about making sure every child, you know, excels and I I don't want to get into a debate with you, but I have to say that Broward County Public Schools is a diverse community. And it's unfortunate that you don't believe they should be exposed to different kinds of families, that you don't believe that equity is something they should be focusing on when clearly it, for me, equity is about making sure every child reaches their full potential and every child comes in with a different a starting point. And that's what educators believe when we take them from that starting point and we give them the tools they need for success. So I just, you can send me that list. I've seen it before. I'm just, I really would like you not to use that term or tell parents that critical race theory. It's a way to get an emotional response out of people when the school system is teaching people to be good human beings. So thank you.
And Dr. Gusta, I think one more member, Representative Marie Woodson, would like to ask you some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Gutta, I know there are a lot of speakers who are waiting to present. However, I have a burning question for number seven. Can you explain to us what's the rationale for prohibiting mask mandates and COVID-19 vaccinations for residents, including children? When we have so many people who are still dying from COVID. So please explain that one to us.
We are strongly, we strongly believe in parents' rights and that the parent has the right, as was stated clearly in the most recent bill that was passed in the previous legislative session on parental rights, the parental rights bill. We believe that it, as it states, that healthcare decisions are the responsibility of the parents. And where that right to make that decision is being ignored that we have to speak out against that. There are numerous parents, numbers of parents who found that their children were not doing well with the masks. They had physical difficulty breathing and so forth and so on. And so therefore, we would say there should be legislation that would prohibit the mandatory mask mandates, especially for in the school city setting. And we're very concerned that this Broward County School Board disdained and even disregarded the rights of parents when they made that decision. Thankfully, they're reconsidering it this afternoon at the board meeting and we wait to see what their decision will be.
Thank you. Thank you, doctor. But how about the parents whose children are being affected by those who are not vaccinated? What happened to science? Do we still believe in science or do we believe on what we believe in?
We're going to be presenting more information on that this afternoon. I believe there are people who will be speaking to the quote, "science." And again, there has been such a variety of and varied interpretation of what that science says. So that gets us into another debate, which I'm sure we don't want to engage in at the moment.
And I would say that this is not a debate. This is us as legislators trying to get the facts before we vote on any piece of legislation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Dr. Gusta, thank you so much for the education. We appreciate you coming today. Next, we're going to hear from one of Florida's greater institutions of higher learning and education, the FAU Owls and Ryan Britton. Ryan, thanks for joining us here today.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that introduction. Go Owls. Now, I love all the owl love. Thank you. My name is Ryan Britton. I'm the Executive Director of Government Relations at Florida Atlantic University. I had the privilege to see many of you last week. As you know, we had FAU Day at the Capitol last week and thank you all very much for helping make that an impactful day for our students, faculty and staff who were there, sharing all of the owl love up in Tally. I'm going to briefly go over a couple of highlights that we have and and then just talk briefly about our legislative agenda for the upcoming session. Thanks in large part because of your support. We continue to be ranked as a nationally outstanding university and U.S. News and World Report. We are currently the most diverse university in the state of Florida, as well as a top 40 nationally among all universities for social mobility. It speaks to our ability to serve all of our students and to do so well. That success can be traced back to our Race to Excellence, which is the strategic plan at the university. That guiding document that President Kelly put in place has helped us make some truly amazing achievements over the last seven or eight years. 28% increase in graduation rate, 15% increase in progress rate, a university record for national merit scholars categorized as a Hispanic-serving institution. All of those things have come as a result of our strategic focus and our desire to get better. And this year, we finished in the top three with the highest score we had ever achieved in the BOGS Performance Funding Metrics, 89 points. So we were very pleased with that as well. I want to thank the group again, Representative Lamarcas, as well as many others in this panel. The Henderson School received the last tranche of funding this last legislative session in 2021, and that construction project is currently underway and we are very pleased about that. As we look to the future, there's two big areas of focus that we will continue to request dollars for. One, from an operational side, the Board of Governors has asked each institution to focus in an area of specialization. Ours is artificial intelligence and big data analytics. This is the future for the workforce. This is what our students are demanding, as well as the marketplace marketplace is demanding that we prepare our young people for. And so that's an operational request, $18 million. And then there's also a new building that we are bringing online. It is a health sciences training and clinical research facility. As you have heard, I'm sure from many others, there are huge shortages in the healthcare workforce across many different areas, nursing, medicine, other health professions, and this would be an interdisciplinary training and research facility that would be housed on the Boca Raton campus, but service our entire service region. And with that, I thank you so much for your time. I thank you all for your support and your wonderful treatment of our students, faculty and staff. Thank you all.
Ryan, thank you and the and the wonderful work that FAU is doing, you know, to uphold the high standards of the the higher education system in the state of Florida. We really appreciate it. And I know that Rep. Hanchowski wants to address you as well.
Sure.
Hi, Ryan. Thank you so much for being here today. And I just want to, first of all, start off by commending you on the students. The students that visited, at least with me in Tallahassee, were phenomenal. They were, they had done their research on the issues that I was interested in and they made an exemplary case for why FAU is so important and investment in FAU is an investment in them. And I just want to compliment you on those students. They were amazing. I'd also like to say that I appreciate how you're you've defined your areas of expertise and especially this health sciences, since those are the areas where there's really a workforce issue and in having enough workforce. Could you also talk a little bit, because the students talked to me about this, and I think this is really important, that you have all different areas of the health sciences working together, whether it be medicine or behavioral health and how that's important in this program that you have.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much for the compliment and and we had heard similar feedback and we very much appreciate it. So I'll just say to that, it's a team effort. I'm joined here by Christine Shaw, who's just behind me, as well as other members of our staff back in Boca Raton. And so it's a group effort in preparing our students, but they really had a great time and I'm glad and we'll continue to make sure they make us proud. In terms of the what we've learned in terms of healthcare training that's novel for what we're looking to accomplish with this facility is we have a college of nursing, an exceptional one. We have a college of medicine. We have a college of engineering. However, typically, when you train for your profession, you do so within that college. So nurses train with nurses and physicians train with physicians and engineers train with engineers. However, when you get into a healthcare marketplace, when you work at a hospital or a healthcare facility, you typically don't only work just with your own profession. You typically work in an interdisciplinary way. So a doctor leads a team with nurses and respiratory therapists and other health professionals. Pharmacists interact with nurses. And so we've realized that to truly train people and prepare them for a modern healthcare environment, there needs to be training that encourages that interdisciplinary approach, and this facility would focus specifically on that. It wouldn't be owned by any one of the colleges at the university. It would be a truly interdisciplinary approach where this would be a shared use facility.
Thank you for that. I know Rep. Bartelmann has wants to engage you as well.
Sure.
I also loved your students and I loved hearing about your STEM program and I have two questions. Are you planning, one thing I'm hearing from students in general is that the nursing programs are so small and it's not that they don't want to be nurses. It's that, you know, 600 people apply for like a couple dozen spots. And so there are people who want to be nurses, but you don't have the capacity. So is there any movement on expanding the enrollment in those courses? Because that's part of the problem.
There is, there are plans to do so and there are plans to expand across our service areas. So the largest area of growth over 300 nursing spots have actually been added in our Davie Campus. And that's a nursing program that you're able to do by going back to school. So it's a postback or a part-time at night program. So we we obviously tailor it around evenings and weekends to accommodate our students. We are looking to build enrollment on the Boca Raton campus. There are some constraints with that. We've been, there is a national narrative that it's very difficult to get nursing faculty and that's true. However, we've done a good job of retaining and attracting nursing faculty to the university. However, we we need more of them. And so that's if we're going to grow enrollments, we're still going to need additional nursing faculty, especially for the higher level nursing courses, the graduate level nursing courses, which require doctoral nursing students to teach those courses. So that's one of the limiting factors, but we have been able to grow by several hundred spots in the last few years and there are plans to continue that growth, but it'll be limited by those factors.
So how many spots do you currently have? And then how many applicants do you get?
Hold on one second. I thought I might get these questions, so I
Right.
Just in case. Okay. Total enrollment is 1,359 students. That's across the university.
The freshman, the incoming?
Well, that's that's total for the cohorts. So each each, so break that down to a couple hundred per cohort because included in that 1,300 is graduate level students as well. In the self-supporting part-time programs, there's 380 students. And there, we also have an accelerated cohort that's unique where you can do basically a nursing degree as a postback full-time, but you can do it in 15 months and that's 40 students per cohort.
And then how many applicants do you get? Because that's what, like I heard one school, they had like 84 openings and they had like 400 people. So people want to.
Yes, there's tremendous demand. I don't know the applicants for nursing. I can speak to the ones about the College of Medicine. We have 64 spots in the College of Medicine. It's also a limited enrollment program. We get 6,000 applicants for those 64 spots. So there's tremendous demand in the marketplace. It allows us to obviously choose the best students. We have wonderfully qualified students. But there is way more demand than there is supply.
And so you alluded to the way to fix that is by attracting more faculty because I'm trying to figure out as a legislature what we can do because it's not for people not wanting to do it.
That's right. Faculty is a limiting factor. Resources in terms of just the operational cost of hiring more faculty across the board with with increased enrollment comes an increased cost on our end to deliver those programs.
And then?
And then spacing, which this new facility would address some of those issues as well. Having a training area. Again, sorry to be long. Many of these nursing students, as well as all health professions, train clinically. They get placed. But then the remainder of their training is done in simulation laboratories and other things which we house.
And my final question has to do with books.
Sure.
So I met with a couple of groups of students in Tallahassee last week, not just from your school. So I know this isn't an FAU problem. But the books are incredibly expensive, especially at the junior and senior year. And it's my understanding that many professors rewrite the textbook semester to semester. So students aren't even able to have cost sharing and for the textbooks and it's costing them a fortune, some of the textbooks. And now with Bright Futures not covering them, it's at a detriment to the students and they're having to make tough choices. So can you explain to me why this happens with the textbooks and they can't use older textbooks and and the online, the ability to have online textbooks in the junior and senior years?
Sure. I'll I'll state that there are instances where a professor of the class is writing the textbook and doing a new edition every year. That doesn't happen very often, but I can't say it doesn't happen at all at FAU. However, there is always a desire for any person in an academic profession to use the most up-to-date source materials that they can get their hands on. So in general, a best practice is to use whatever the most up-to-date or current edition is. So to give folks the benefit of the doubt, that's typically one of the things that drives costs. The publishers are aware that they can always say, well, we've got the latest and greatest edition of a of a textbook and print those new ones each year. So it does tend to form a loop. We were obviously supportive of Bright Futures finding additional ways to cover the cost of textbooks. In terms of the university, and I can't speak to all of the measures that we're doing, but I'd be happy to follow up with you with some of the things. But there are always efforts ongoing to provide flexibility and cost effectiveness to our students to try to lower costs. I'll give you an example. Over the last several years, we've lowered the cost of degree by $9,500. That's over six years. So that's been done largely through efficiencies, scholarshiping and other things. So we are focused on trying to reduce costs as much as students and textbooks plays into that. It doesn't mean we always do a great job and we understand that that is an added cost to students, but we are trying where we can to find ways to help mitigate all costs of enrollment, tuition fees, as well as some of the ancillary costs that they experience.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me ask those questions, Chair.
Of course. And Ryan, next we have Rep. Lamarcas.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Ryan, I'll be quick. First, just to follow up with Representative Hanchowski, he said, when you bring, when you, when people come to Tallahassee, I always told people here at the county, you want to advocate for your issue, show up and and tell me why it's important. And when people go all the way to Tallahassee, which we know is not easy to do, especially when you bring a group of students, it makes a tremendous impact. So I appreciate you all going there and especially in committee weeks before things getting crazy. Obviously, I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight that Christine does an amazing job while you're not there or the president's not there when, you know, we're in the trenches and all that. But from a standpoint of the AI issue, and I appreciate that issue being FAU's, you know, key focus. Is there any overlap with other other institutions in that specific space or is that kind of just dictated towards FAU's priority? US got something different. FSU has something different?
It's a, it's a good question. So there there are questions that we've received in the past about that. Our our focus on AI and data analytics, and it's actually, to be even more specific, applied artificial intelligence, and that helps differentiate. This was something that we received several years ago, three years ago now, in terms of our focus in this area. And the reason why it was already something that was spread across the university. President Kelly talks about our pillars and platforms. AI and data science were platforms, meaning that they touched every part of the university. Because of that focus, we knew that this was an area we could continue to elevate. And so we're doing so, but we're doing so specifically in the space of applied artificial intelligence. We're not doing the basic science around developing AI and algorithms. What we're doing is training a workforce on how to use these tools, both artificial intelligence and data science tools to be effective in the marketplace. So that helps differentiate us. University of Florida has obviously made a huge leap into this space. They've received a very large piece of equipment and software from Nvidia, which is a leader in the AI technology space. They're willing to partner with us and make their tech available to us. So we we hope to not have any duplication of efforts. And we also think that the marketplace wants these skills so And we also think that the marketplace wants these skills so much. And there's enough need in the marketplace that many universities should be playing in this space and not just one or two. And then last but not least, the unique thing about FAU that I mentioned at the beginning of this is our diversity and that creates a diverse workforce. And what we're hearing from the marketplace as well is that there is a need for a diverse workforce change and trained in these skills. That's something we do very well at FAU.
Thank you.
Go else. Go else.
Ryan, thank you so much. Really appreciate you coming here. I especially appreciate you mentioning your campus in Davie. Which is in District 98. And for those of you who don't know, that is the heart of Broward County. That's my district, right? Thank you. We, we do appreciate you, you being here. And you didn't mention it, but I know one program that you had prior to the pandemic, which I hope is still going on. Was I, I think it was low cost where seniors could audit classes at FAU. If you could just spend 30 seconds telling us about that.
Absolutely. So FAU, for those of you who don't know, and this is a significant point of pride. Has the largest lifelong learning society in the country, not the state, the country. And so lifelong learning is for senior, senior and adult learners that want to continue their education. They get to audit classes. There's a course catalog. The FAU Boca Raton would be on its own, the largest. The FAU Jupiter on its own would be the largest in the country, but put them together and we far outpace anywhere else. We recently, just before the pandemic began. Expanded into lifelong learning Fort Lauderdale. And so in our Fort Lauderdale campus, we are now hosting. Lifelong learning classes and doing so virtually, so as to expand the offering. So I encourage you all. If you'd like to know any more about that and connect your constituents to those learning opportunities, we're happy to provide you with information.
The school is truly doing an amazing job and we appreciate you being here today. Thanks so much.
We appreciate the community support. Go else.
Thank you. Next we have L Hope Gary Virtual from Fort Lauderdale Community Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and delegation for the virtual meeting. My name is Hope, L Hope Gary. I'm the CEO of Fort Lauderdale Community Center. And we have been providing services and programs. In February 2020 will be for 20 years. We seek to improve the conditions and. For youth, families and individuals, seniors, disabled veterans who are disadvantaged in the zip code of the 33311 and surrounding area. Through family strengthening, education, awareness and providing basic resource, credit counseling, job employability skills. With partners and resources in the community. We really look to be an advocate in eliminating ignorance, homelessness and unemployment in disadvantaged communities. Our new cohort is. The project that we call the Ghana Project, uplifting our youth. It's a program focused on taking black youth from a disadvantaged community to. Identity experience in education, cultural and historic initiatives in Ghana. While helping them cope with the traumas that many black youth face in Fort Lauderdale stemming from police brutality. Systemic racism and now dealing with COVID-19 and rising suicides. And the Alice Report produced by the United Way shows the 33111 as one of the hardest hit areas. With the black population below the poverty line even before the pandemic. And is left with little help. Black youth deserve the chance to see what it feels like. To be accepted and wanted by a country with people who look like them. The outcomes is really what we've done is taken. Staff and students to Ghana for the year of return in 2019. When the president of Ghana invited the black destroyer to come home. And it was the most amazing experience of our lives. Student and staff experienced what they described as peace, love, empowerment, upliftment. And the ability to heal from the nonstop trauma. Black people experience on the daily basis due to systemic racism. Due to police brutality and violence against black people in the US in general. Our goal is to achieve a healing experience in our youth, to bring them. Back home to Fort Lauderdale. It'll make them more empathetic, sympathetic to the needs of our. Of others and, and for them to connect with their Ghanaian counterparts and to slow down. Relax for more than a day, a chance to renew their minds, spirits and helping them rebuild. This heartbreaking pandemic that's left devastating loss in the black community. And what we're asking for this delegation to do. Is to. Consider funding for Fort Lauderdale Community Center for this Ghana project and uplifting our youth. 15 student and staff a year for $75,000 and possibly funding us for the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that ask. And I hope that you have some support for that moving forward. Not seeing any questions. Thank you so much for being here. And our next speaker. Will be Dennis Haas Virtual from ARC. And we're upset Dennis that you're not here personally to bring us some of that arc culinary food.
Thank you so much. And that's a great lead in. Arc Broward has been around for, gosh, since 1957, serving the Broward County community. With a focus primarily on individuals with developmental disabilities, although in some of our employment programs. We are serving folks with varying disabilities and employment barriers. The, just to give you a sense of the scope of the organization over the years, we're on 10 sites with 400 employees. Across 21 programs, a couple of mission-based enterprises and a fleet of 40, 45 vehicles. And we thank you, Mr. Chair, Representative Gottlieb, Senator Book for supporting. A magnificent project where we built a culinary arts center. That involves education, a unique opportunity for education, employment, training. And catering business to help support it. With your help. We were able to finish that project and have our grand opening. And then the pandemic hit us smack in the face. So. We're still trying to just ease our way into the public view. It is. A magnificent opportunity for the entire community. One of the things that we found we're able to do is serve other nonprofit organizations and, and others, particularly in emergencies and. Assure that they have food service during emergencies. We're missing a generator in order to do that. And that's one of the projects that we're seeking. Help with to complete that this, this session. It's called the Art Culinary Food and Safety and Security Project. In addition, the skills training, education. That, is that my time? That's my own. Is a program that's been funded by, with your help and sponsorship. Again. We're seeking to continue that this year. It's had great success. We now have. Everybody that we helped get jobs, lost them during the pandemic and we're starting back at square one. And, and one final project for our residential program called Bark Housing in the heart of Davie. And with the help, sponsorship of Representative Lamarcas this session. We're looking for a generator to complete the ability to provide emergency services during power outages to a. The third of two houses on that campus. But overshadowing all of that, that we haven't heard a lot about today, perhaps the most critical. Challenge that is facing us and that you are hearing about in healthcare and hospitality, but that is worker wages. And the, the great challenges in hiring. Staff to provide the services that we provide. When you hear about those issues as you have and will continue to hear about. Think about the world of developmental disabilities as well. We are, as a, as a field statewide. There are probably 100, 125 group homes that have closed in the recent past. As a result of not being able to hire staff. We ourselves have people ready to come back to some of our day programs and other programs. That are at home and their families are ready to go back to work. We, but we can't bring them back because we don't have the staff. The answer to all of that, you've heard a lot of great things from others, the universities, et cetera. But it really boils down to supporting wage increases. And it is beyond minimum wage, way beyond minimum wage. Ours comes primarily through Medicaid and Medicaid waiver programs. You will hear a lot about that. Please support that and think of what I'm saying. Cindy Aaronberg and the Children's Services Council has seen fit to. Increase wages for programs that they fund to $15 an hour starting, which is a huge, huge leap. And if it can be done, but that's at the heart of it. It's a complicated issue. But if, if you said, what is the, the one great threat to, to our ability to. Not only care for, but to provide safety, security and the ability to, to lead productive lives to the world of developmental disabilities. It is that. But in the interest of time, I want to thank you all for your support of Arc Broward over the years. We invite you to come in and visit us and see the great work that we're doing, particularly the Culinary Arts Center with your help. Thank you.
Dennis, thanks so much for the informative presentation. You guys are, are truly. Changing people's lives and a very underserved population that really truly needs your help. And, and you know, I know, and I know that Chip knows the, you know. Helping you guys is really our great reward. So thank you so much. And we appreciate you being here. Next up is Larry Ryan from Community Based Care.
Larry Ryan, CEO and President, Childnet Community Based Care Lead Agency in Broward County and also in Palm Beach County. I knew going after Dennis was not going to be a good thing. Because he stole some of my thunder in many ways. But first, as I usually do annually, but did not last year, a quick, quick update on foster care in Broward County. Things in Broward County, the number of children in foster care is the lowest it has ever been. We are just below 1,700 children. The fiscal health of the foster care system in Broward County is. Bar none, except perhaps our neighbors to the south as strong as anybody. That said, we can do so much better and we need to do so much better. And the primary obstacle, although there are many, but the primary obstacle which we have longed for far too long ignored. Is the lack of a stable frontline workforce. So just as Dennis spoke about his challenges. Foster care systems throughout the state of Florida are struggling and have always struggled with unacceptable levels of turnover. Many organizations with turnover annually of case managers of more than 50%. And when that case turns, that case manager turns over, cases go back to the start oftentimes. And children stay in foster care is unnecessarily long. So as a statewide organization, the Florida Coalition for Children, of which all the lead agencies are a member and all our providers are a member. We are coming to the legislature with a request to create a minimum starting salary for dependency case managers of $45,000 annually. And create an ongoing salary structure to better professionalize that workforce. That ticket will not be small. We are currently going to be asking for $40 million statewide. It is large. We need it to be recurring. We are hopeful it can come from some of the online sales tax revenues that will be generated. And I beseech you to give it the fullest possible consideration in the upcoming session. Thank you very much.
Larry, thank you so much, but don't leave yet. It looks like Rep Woodson wants to engage you in some conversation.
I thought it was, my apology. Thank you for the work that you do with the foster care children. And we know definitely there's an issue with the pay. Funding is a major issue. What other recommendations that you have in order for us to attract good workers? To keep them, you know, the retention is a problem, turnover is an issue. So what other recommendations that you have besides the funding? And definitely. We all need to be fighting for, fighting for the funding for those children. Because once they turn out of this foster care system, they are there in the world, in a world that they don't really know. They are there fighting for themselves.
Great question. And obviously it's about more than money. So several of the things that we're hoping to do and some of us are doing. One clearly is making the job of the case manager more manageable. They are entry level staff that are overwhelmed by a system that demands so much of them. Fortunately, this last session, Senate Bill 80 and Senate Bill 96, which, which put a lot of good things in place. There was money attached to that. To hire staff to take on some of those responsibilities. But we need to clear away the bureaucratic sort of things and the, and the form filling and. Fortunately, the state of Florida just signed a contract with DocuSign, which will enable. Everybody in the case to be able to sign things electronically and we won't have case managers traveling all over the county. So ease, get, get the, get the non-social work, the things that aren't really helping families. Off their plate if possible. Then training the workforce. We have expanded our relationship with FAU. We are in the process of expanding our relationship with Nova Southeastern. To start recruiting staff, we have healthy internship programs with both. But now we want to get into undergraduates and get them interested in this profession. And if we can sell them a profession that at least starts at $45,000 a year, instead of the average starting salary of $37,000 right this minute. I think we can get more traction then and then get them in internship programs. I would say training of staff after they are on, training and support of staff. Because it's an overwhelming job. They're down at the bottom. We have judges. We have bureaucrats like me. We have attorneys all over that are telling them what to do. We need to raise them and support them instead of beat them down. I could go on a long time, but thank you.
Thank you so much. And I totally agree with your request and your asks for more money. I just wanted to know if you had numbers on. The case managers, like how, what's their caseload? I wanted to make sure that people understand how many cases that they actually have to deal with.
Great question. Thank you. Caseloads vary dramatically across the state. Right now, because of the good news that we only have seven, only 1,700 foster care kids in Broward. And we have a healthy system here because of those low numbers. So actually Broward's case, per caseloads, per case manager are under 15 children per case manager, which is sort of a, a good national standard. We were actually before COVID down around 13, but we're getting hit with workforce issues in Broward also. But elsewhere in the state of Florida, you can find caseloads of 30 and 40 and up to 50 children. And those are the systems that are struggling. Mind you, Broward was there five, six years ago. I mean. You can't control the front end. If there's a ton of removals, which we had here maybe five or six years ago. And we get the same amount of money, no matter how many children we serve, then those caseloads go up and up. And that's what's happening in places like Hillsborough and Pinellas and Sarasota. We're fortunate here that our caseloads again are under 15, but that is not the norm. That is the exception. And you can't, you can't, no case manager can live and do a good job when they've got to be responsible for 30 children on that caseload.
Thank you.
And we know there's many problems that can occur over time in the job that you hold. Representative Christina Fiskowski.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to ask quickly, you mentioned how many foster kids there are in Broward. How many are there statewide?
I, you know, I think the number, can you help me? I think the number. I'm guessing now. I, I would really be guessing. It's upwards of 20,000. The number 22, 22 million, 22,000. It, it, in my mind is 22,000. It might be higher. I obviously can go back and get that for you.
Yeah, I would appreciate that because we always talk about, you know, I, I see, you mentioned the request of 40 million. We always talk about the importance of investing in our children and really. Making sure that they have the opportunities they need and they're given the resources they need to help them later in life succeed. And yet. When we talk about the people who are there to support them and help them navigate through it, we say they should do it out of the goodness of their heart. As opposed to being able to make a decent salary so that they can also afford to live. So I just wanted to. Thank you for the work you're doing and thank you for highlighting this. It's not just in the foster care. It's also in the. Early childcare, early learning and all the behavioral health areas. We have a massive workforce issue where we say the work they do is so important and yet the salaries are not keeping up with. The appreciation we give them.
Absolutely. And, and even though it wasn't a question, you know, and knowing there's people very familiar with the education system and mental health system on this delegation. It's sort of when you raise one up. So as soon as we put this in proposal. All our mental health colleagues said, oh no, our, our therapists and our case managers are going to need to get that too. And we're trying to get to where the school teachers are. So it is, it's, you know, and it's interesting. It's clearly South Florida delegation so far. I did a presentation in Palm Beach a couple of weeks ago. And, and you guys understand.
And again, I know there's many problems that can occur over time in a split second. I personally would like to have a sit down meeting with you because of the timeframe today that we are on this restraint. I would like to schedule something so that we can see if we can work on some legislative problems this year.
As always, and now as we're getting a little bit more free, I mean, I can get back on my tour of seeing every member of the delegation if possible in their offices, either in district or up there. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Next, Brucey Cummings from Florida Action Committee.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is Brucey Cummings, and I'm a registered voter. I am speaking to you in hopes of providing you with the information regarding problems in the Florida Sex Offender Registry. I submit this information with the intent of educating our legislators about the registry, so that you can make more informed decisions before enacting new laws. And you will be motivated to revise the current registry to remove some of these problems. The American Law Institute has recently included the topic of sex offender registration in their proposal for revisions to the Model Penal Code, or MPC. The MPC is used by more than half of the states before enacting criminal codes. Even courts in non-adopting states have been influenced by its provisions. Many sexual offenders that are registrable in the federal and most state laws are not registrable under the MPC provisions. Why, you might ask? Because research shows that they have a very low rate of recidivism, regardless of what you may hear in the media. And registration only serves to destabilize the individual. The MPC suggests that there are six offenders which should trigger a registration obligation. Because I don't have time to read this list, I've provided you with a handout that will have all of these six pieces. Rather than lumping everybody into a one-size-fits-all category, subject to draconian restrictions for life, we should reconsider this approach. The Lifetime Registry for All has created a bloated, ineffective, and super expensive waste of resources. There are volumes of up-to-date research showing these resources could be better spent on prevention in order to stop these crimes from occurring in the first place. Please read and consider the information I've printed for you. It's incumbent on you, as representatives of our community, to create productive and effective laws that actually serve to keep our children safe. Thank you so much. This is an important issue, and I know it's not a popular one. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Melanie McDonald from Florida Medical Rights Association.
Hi, thank you for having me speak today. I really appreciate it. Some of you may recognize me. I've been speaking about this issue for several years now, in meetings just like this, and in Tallahassee. On November 18th, 2016, my father died due to medical negligence. It was only three days after my mother died. He was actually in the hospital because of complicated grief, and consequently, subsequently was sedated to death. The law, statute 768.21, subsection 8, says that there is nothing that I can do about this, because at the time of his death, he was unmarried, and I was over the age of 25. That's just wrong. First of all, it's discriminatory, right? I could, I could go on with the unconstitutionality and all the problems that this, that this law causes. So, following his death, I, I started a movement. We have a lot of people all across the state speaking in meetings just like this, and four pieces of legislation that I'd like you to be aware of today. House Bill 6011 and, and Senate Bill 262 to repeal the portion of this law pertaining to the loss of adult children that are not married. That most, most often points to people who have a mental disability, such as autistic individuals who can never get married, but, but if they suffer medical negligence, their parents cannot hold anyone accountable. Also, you'll see House Bill 6039 and Senate Bill 560, which are to repeal the portion of this law that pertains directly to people like myself, who've lost a parent or loved one, and cannot hold a physician, a hospital, or a nurse accountable. There are currently, an estimated by Florida Census data, data, about nine, nine million people who are at risk to be victims of this law in the state of Florida. It puts profit over the value of human life. When it comes to the value of human life, accountability should not be negotiable. The opposition, who there is someone in this room that, interestingly enough, opposes this bill, these bills from passing, they'll tell you that there are not enough doctors in Florida. But if you check DeSantis's Physician Workforce Report, there are enough doctors in Florida. They will also tell you that this will give rise to medical malpractice insurance rates. Medical malpractice insurance rates are high in Florida. We know that. But the problem really is that not all physicians are required to have it, so it's weighted unfairly against those who do carry it. And this law was put in place to prevent the rise of medical malpractice insurance. It's been in place since 1990. I think everyone here can agree that malpractice insurance rates have continued to rise and have nothing to do with this law. If we don't want a rise in lawsuits, perhaps we should focus on accountability. Perhaps we should focus on patient safety, and what it means to be held accountable, and create the culture that safety is more important. That's all I have to say today.
Thank you so much for coming. I think many of us support the, the free kill statutes that you're talking about, and, and voted, you know, in favor of your position last year. Hopefully, you'll get some relief this, this session.
I was, I was going to comment to thank you personally, because I did actually watch that, and had some speakers that I was working with that were there. And I appreciate the comments that you made, and you put thoughtfulness into it. Thank you, Representative Gill.
Our pleasure, our pleasure. Our next speaker is Tiara Smith with the Florida Network of Youth and Family Services Prevention Council.
Good morning. My name is Tiara Smith, the Executive Director of Prevention Central, which is an agency that serves the 33311 area code. I have with me Senator Matt Matthew, that will, I'm sorry, Senator Matthew Meadows, who will come and speak to us today about the Florida Network of Youth and Family Services, and what we have to offer to underprivileged children.
Thank you, Tiara. I've sat where you're sitting for about 14 years, listening to testimonies from that end, now giving testimonials from this end. The Florida Network of Youth and Family Services is not anything new. It started over 40 years ago by Governor Martinez's wife, who had a passion for helping kids throughout the state of Florida, and helping kids to reach their full potential. Presently, we have organizations that are located in the communities throughout the state of Florida. We serve over 20,000 kids per year. We serve as an emergency room for those children who need, and families who have needs. There are Send Fins programs. They're called Send Fins and Families in Needs Programs. We receive our funding through the Department of Juvenile Justice, Office of Prevention. We have a line item each year of over $37 million. Now, those $37 million, 93% of those dollars go to direct funding to the agencies and the people and the communities. These are organizations that are in the community, not what we bring and put in the community, but already exist in the communities that need the resources to do what they need to do to keep their families whole in these communities. An independent study was done by the Office of Tax Watch and Justice Research Center, says that our program saved the state over $160 million a year on the deep end. That's because we keep these kids safe and families whole, and they do not become a part of, a permanent part of the criminal justice system. We serve kids who are having problems in families and schools, and have risky behavior that made it later on, caused them to become a part of the criminal justice system. We also serve kids who sometimes are homeless and are runaways. We are recognized as a national model program by the, the Juvenile Justice Department, National Juvenile Justice Department, and American Bar Association. We are proud to say that we have this program in the state of Florida that serves youth and keep them from becoming a part of, a permanent part of the criminal justice system. And we appreciate all the help you have done. We've had full funding for the past six years, and it's because of people like you who recognize the needs to keep our families whole, and, and realize that the importance of keeping our kids safe in the state of Florida. So, we want to thank you. And those of you on criminal justice and criminal justice appropriations, you will be receiving information on our legislative agenda for this year. So, we thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you this morning.
Thank you so much for coming and addressing us today, and for your years of service to our community. And I know that Rep. Geller wants to address you and, and speak with you right now.
Thank you.
Bottom right.
My leader is here to, to assist. I just want to thank you, Senator, for your advocacy for the program, and as the chair said, for your really many years of terrific service to this county and this state. It is much remembered, much appreciated, and it's really a pleasure to see you here today.
And I just want to mention, you two have two programs in Broward County. Tiara from the Bethel Human Services Corporation, and you also have the Liptman Youth Service Center in Oakland Park on 43rd Terrace. And we've added, because of your funding, and this is my closing, med costs, because a lot of the kids have medical problems in these residential facilities. So, thank you again very much, and God bless you.
Thank you. And next up with Mental Health America of Southeast Florida, Florida Mental Health Advocacy Coalition, and NAMI is Laura Diaz Dars, and she's present. Thank you. And members, after this speaker, as we approach the noon hour, what we're going to do is, the delegation is going to take lunch, which is in the back. We're going to bring our lunch out here and call our local bills. We're going to call the local bills as we eat lunch, so as to not offend the speakers who are addressing us. We'll eat as quickly as we can, and do our local bills as quickly as we can, and then get back to paying attention to the speakers that are here to address us today.
Hi, my name is Laura Diaz Dars. I am, again, representing the Mental Health America of Southeast Florida, NAMI's Arts Center, Florida Mental Health Advocacy Coalition, Broward's NAMI Advocacy Group. I am also the supervisor for Power of Peers over at Mental Health America of Southeast Florida, and NAMI's Arts Center. And I'm here to ask that you support Senate Bill 282, which is the peer specialist bill, which I can tell you from my personal experience about the importance of peer specialists. As I mentioned, I am a certified recovery peer specialist. I've also been in recovery for mental health issues for 17 years. I'm doing exceedingly well. I have a master's degree. I have a management position at my job. I've been in a relationship for over 11 years. I have fabulous hair, and no real issues with substance misuse. And I also haven't had a severe episode in over six years. And a lot of the success of my recovery is due to the tangible access to clinicians, medications, but chiefly, it's the intangible elements and privileges that I had access to, including a supportive family. I'm well-spoken, and was able to have a large hand in my own treatment. But chiefly also there is that I had, I was able to create an informal network of peers, people who were struggling with mental health issues as well. They helped me give vocabulary to express my needs. They understood the limality of experiencing and living with these kinds of diseases, and they knew how to provide support in an intrinsic and immeasurable way. Sorry. But there are large swaths of the community that have limited access to the tangible elements of treatment, and often no access to the intangible. For people who live in poverty, for, or for, who come from abusive or neglectful household homes, the ability to procure even the simplest support system is an impossible task, not to mention being able to advocate for oneself or navigate systems of care. As I've shared, having the guidance and support of peers, people who know how, what it is to be sick or struggling, is essential to recovery. Living with mental health and substance misuse, substance use issues is dehumanizing. Peer specialists don't fit, just fill the gaps in treatment and advocacy. They begin the process of humanization. In my line of work as supervisor of Power of Peers, I've seen miracles happen. People for whom the system has written off as lost causes or only fit to medicate to oblivion have been made real strides in their recovery. We've helped people develop necessary skills to navigate their healthcare, help them access programs or housing opportunities, and so on. But most importantly, we've provided the elusive human element, the part that says you are not alone, and you're not meant to only struggle and suffer. The part that says that it's all right to be angry, scared, tired, and confused. But you can see that it does get better. The person that says hope is not a four-letter word, but it is the concrete in the face of the intangible. And so, I ask that you support SB 282. It seeks to enhance and confirm peer specialist is necessary within the system, so that people don't have to face their recovery alone. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I can tell you, I'm not sure of my colleagues, but I know many of us likely support that bill. I have a, a peer bill, which I invite you to contact me and, and talk to me about. I'm also in recovery, so I understand the, the fight and the battles on a daily basis, and appreciate the hard work that you do and your advocacy with NAMI.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And one second, please. As, as stated, we're, we're just going to take a, a few minutes. We're each going to grab a lunch. We're going to eat it up here while we do our local bills again, so that we don't offend our speakers. We want to get to everybody today and have everybody here, and that'll keep us less ornery. So, we're, we're going to have lunch. Thank you so much. While we just take a, probably about a 10-minute break. Thank you so much. have some other members back in the room, we're going to do a quick roll call and then move to our local bills. Some members do have, unfortunately, some commitments to get to, so we want to get those done and out of the way. Miss, those of you who would please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a quorum roll call. Senator Polsky, Senator Book, Senator Thurston, Senator Farmer, Senator Jones, Representative Lamarcus, Representative Dubose, Representative Omfroy, Representative Huntrowski.
Here.
Representative Daley.
Here.
Representative Jenny, Representative Geller, Representative Woodson.
Yes.
Representative Robinson.
Here.
Representative Fabrício, Representative Bartman.
Thank you.
Representative Barrero, Representative, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Williams, Chair Gottlieb.
Present.
One, two, three, four.
Do we have a quorum?
We have 11.
We have a quorum.
We're good.
Okay, so with that, we are going to start our local bill presentation. And we're going to start with Town of Southwest Ranches.
Town of Southwest Ranches Local Bill, an act relating to the Town of Southwest Ranches, Broward County, providing an exception to general law prohibiting the sale and use of fireworks located within the Town of Southwest Ranches, except under specified circumstances, providing applicability, providing an effective date.
And for those of you who didn't know, that was our counsel, Louis Reinstein. And I will now ask for Member Robin Bartman to present the bill.
Thank you, members.
So the next is Dan.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Thank you, members. This is a local bill. I don't know if any of you have ever been to the beautiful town of Southwest Ranches. It's an agrarian community. It has cattle ranches. It has farms. It has horses. It's a very special place. It actually, it's very unique. There aren't stoplights. The people who live there have lived for generations. They live on very large parcels of property. And in order to protect their animals, we're asking that you support this local bill, which would prohibit the sale and use of fireworks within the Town of Southwest Ranches under specified circumstances. This bill mirrors the Village of Wellington bill in Palm Beach County that was passed last legislative session. It is the same language, and I would like to ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation on the bill. I'm going to ask if there are any comments or speakers from the public regarding this bill, virtual or present. Yes, sir? You're still not on.
How's that? Oh, good. Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the delegation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Andy Burns. I am the town administrator in Southwest Ranches, and I want to thank you for your consideration of this bill. We're 13 square miles. We're 8,000 people. We are an equestrian and very animal-friendly community. The fireworks every year are traumatic for our animals and for our owners of those animals who care for them, in some cases, like members of the family. So we ask for your consideration on the bill. I'll certainly defer, but I want to thank Representative Bartman for her sponsorship. And I'm here for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Please don't go far. I think Rep. Lamarcus had his hand up first.
Thank you, Chair. And thanks for coming here to give a little explanation. I do have one question. With the Town of Southwest Ranches being kind of bifurcated, if you will, and having other property in between and all that, would there be, I mean, would there be an effort to ban fireworks in the areas that kind of abut or kind of separate you? You know what I'm saying?
This would obviously would not apply to our neighbors. We do contract for police services with Davie Police Department, and so they are very familiar with those same animal issues as well. And so they're certainly adept and skilled with it. I think the three days that fireworks are permitted under state law isn't necessarily the issue. The problem for us is they go on sale, in some cases, weeks before, and that's what starts the fireworks season. So it really becomes an extended trauma in those cases. But we'll work very closely with Davie Police to make sure that it only applies to But we'll work very closely with Davie Police to make sure that it only applies to our areas. Yes, sir.
Rep. Gower?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Yeah, I support your bill, and you know, let's protect the animals, and that's all great. But my question is, I understand why we don't want fireworks to be shot off in the town, okay? Because it's disturbing to the animals, and so the part about the use of fireworks makes perfect sense to me. But you're also seeking to prohibit the sale of them, and assuming that, you know, you are enforcing the law against the use of fireworks, and if nobody else is using them, anybody who is would stand out like immediately, pretty quickly. Why should somebody not be able to sell fireworks if they're otherwise properly licensed? Isn't it the use we're concerned about? I don't think the sale traumatizes the animals, does it?
The sale does not. The sale is not an issue, but we have a very limited commercial base. We're extremely rural, certainly by Broward County standards. And there really aren't opportunities or places for people to set up those roadside tents. We do partner in some cases with religious institutions and schools for pumpkin sales or Christmas tree sales like that, but we haven't had that experience with fireworks.
However, you can get quail eggs, chicken eggs.
Bailey, did you have any question or concern?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank Representative Bartman for bringing this bill. As probably one of the few that has a background in horses up here, I can understand certainly the intent behind Rep. Will Height's original bill for the City of Wellington, and now this bill for the City of Southwest Ranches, Town of Southwest Ranches. So I appreciate you bringing it and for all you're doing, and I'm proud to support it.
And I will just say, as your neighbor in Davie, I've spoken with Mayor Paul. I know Davie supports this. I believe Davie supports the bill. I don't want to speak on their behalf because I'm not authorized to at this point in time. But having spoken to my mayor, we do, and behalf of my dog Gonzo, we support the bill. Are there any other speakers? Okay, with that being no other commentary, no other speakers, I'm going to ask Representative Bartman to close on her bill.
I would like you to think, I'd like to thank the delegation for their support of this bill in advance. I am a proponent of local control, and this is a very special town and a very special community, and their animals are incredibly important to them. I want to just point out what a great job the mayor and the town council are doing. They're even creating a park in an area when there is flooding, so the residents can put their animals on higher ground so that they're not in the water. That's how much this community cares about their animals, and they, and this will help save the lives of their animals. It's very traumatic, and horses can have heart attacks, et cetera. So thank you all very much. Thank you, City Manager, Town Manager Burns, for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, Representative Bartman, having closed on her bill, Ms. Knowles, if you will, please call it for a vote.
Thank you. Calling on Southwest Ranches Local Bill, Senator Polsky,
Yes.
Senator Book, Senator Thurston, Senator Farmer, Senator Jones, Representative Lamarka,
Yes.
Representative Dubose, Representative Omfroy, Representative Hantrowski,
Yes.
Representative Daley,
Yes.
Representative Jenny, Representative Geller, Representative Woodson, Representative Robinson,
Yes.
Representative Fabrizio, Representative Bartman,
Yes.
Representative Barrero, Vice Chair Williams, Chair Gottlieb,
Yes.
Have 11. Passes.
Members, the vote passes. Thank you for your support. With that, we're going to call, and we're going in reverse order, but Bill number four, the North Springs Improvement District Bill. Mr. Reinstein, if you will, please call Representative Bailey's bill.
North Springs Improvement District, Representative Daley? He has a motion.
I have a motion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Do we, are we going in the order to read it the second time and then make the motion?
No, he's going to go ahead and.
And amend. Okay.
I have a substitute for the original filed local bill, Mr. Chair. Motion to accept that.
Okay, is, do I need somebody to second that?
You do.
Okay, the motion having been seconded to substitute language, that'll be granted?
Take a vote.
All in favor?
Oh, never mind, it won't be.
Any opposed?
Yes. Thought that was up to the chair. My apologies. Okay, anybody not in favor? Okay, not hearing any. I guess just make sure I want to follow the rules. We're in position to allow him to read the new version, correct?
I have the new version here. We'll read the new version. The subject remains the same. The topic remains the same. An act relating to North Springs Improvement District, Broward County, amending Chapter 2005-341, Laws of Florida as amended, revising the number of board members, revising referendum to reflect change in number of board members, providing an effective date.
Representative Daley, will you please present the bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the delegation staff and everybody that worked through this with us. We have done this now as an amended version. The amended version, all it does is seek to move the number of board members in North Springs Improvement District from five back down to three. So a little bit of background, they were originally three. They've always been three. Last year with the bill we passed, they moved to five. And we were too late in the process last year to amend that local bill again. Plus, I didn't want to bug y'all a second time for a special meeting. So we thought we'd just come back at it this year. So that's, that's the only change in this bill.
With Rep. Daley having closed on his opening portion of the bill, I will invite, and just to be clear, both members and people from the public to make comment, question, or debate on the bill at this time. Seeing nobody in the room, anybody virtual, not hearing from anybody virtually, Rep. Daley, you may close on your bill. We've closed, Mr. Chair. Rep. Daley, having closed on his bill, Ms. Knowles, if you will, please take the roll.
On North Spring Improvement District, the new version, Senator Polsky,
Yes.
Senator Book, Senator Thurston, Senator Farmer, Senator Jones, Representative Lamarka, Representative Dubose, Representative Omfroy, Representative Hantrowski,
Yes.
Representative Daley,
Yes.
Representative Jenny, Representative Geller, Representative Woodson, Representative Robinson,
Yes.
Representative Fabrizio, Representative Bartman, Representative Barrero, Vice Chair Williams, Chair Gottlieb.
Yes.
Bill passes.
Okay, and with that, the bill passes. We will now call Bill number three, again going in reverse order, the Broward County Board of County Commissioners and Act Relating to Broward County, Representative Daley's bill, Mr. Reinstein.
Broward County Board of County Commissioners, an act relating to Broward County, providing a short title, creating an independent special district to provide and fund senior services throughout Broward County, providing for a governing body to be known as the Senior Services Council of Broward County, providing for such council's membership, powers, and duties, and budget procedure, authorizing the levy of ad valorem taxes not to exceed one-half mill, providing for additional district power, duties, responsibilities, and obligations, providing for dissolution of the district, providing for a referendum and ballot question, providing effective dates. That is the bill.
Having read the bill for a second time, Representative Daley, you can present your bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As delegation council mentioned, this local bill will allow for the creation of an independent special district to provide and fund senior services known as the Edith Schaefer Letterberg Senior Services Act. It would establish a governing board, the Senior Services Council of Broward County, similar to the Children's Services Council. You've seen this all before. You've supported it in the past. Thank you for that continuing support. My hope is to move it up in Tallahassee this year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Representative Daley, having presented his bill, I will now offer to the public and members again to debate, question, or comment on the bill. And seeing Ms. West at the podium, I assume you have something you want to tell us.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and delegation members. First of all, thank you to Rep. Daley for filing this bill again. My name is Devin West. For the record, on behalf of Broward County, we ask for your favorable support for the proposed Edith Schaefer Letterberg Senior Services Act. Nearly 13% of the seniors living in Broward are living below the poverty line, and over the next decade, we expect more than 236,000 adults to age into retirement in our county. The cost of provide the increasing need for services to seniors exceeds available state and local funds. Broward is asking for the opportunity to bring the senior services to this proposal to the voters of the county to vote on authorizing up to a half-mill to support services for this vulnerable population. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. West. Do I see any questions, comments? Rep. Lamarka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for process, Devin, if I could. So this would, if this gets approved by the legislature, it would be on a ballot item for the voters of Broward County to vote for?
That is correct, Representative.
And that would be 50 plus, simple majority?
Simple majority. Yes, correct.
Okay, and the plan, I heard that it was a, I understood it being a half-mill.
Yes, that's correct as well.
But obviously, that would be depending on what it started with, and it doesn't have to be that. That's the max.
That's correct. It is the max up to a half a mill.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other comment or concerns from the delegation, anybody from the public, nobody in the room, anybody virtual, not seeing or hearing from anybody, Rep. Daley, you can close on the bill.
We've closed, Mr. Chair.
Rep. Daley, having closed on the bill, Ms. Knowles, if you'll please call the roll.
On Broward County Senior Services Bill, Senator Polsky,
Yes.
Senator Book, Senator Thurston, Senator Farmer, Senator Jones, Representative Lamarka, Representative Dubose, Representative Omfroy, Representative Hantrowski,
Yes.
Representative Daley,
Yes.
Representative Jenny, Representative Geller, Representative Woodson, Representative Robinson,
Yes.
Representative Fabrizio, Representative Bartman, Representative Barrero, Vice Chair Williams, Chair Gottlieb.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, and the bill passes. Saving the best bills for last, I will have to pass the gavel on to my vice chair. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm calling on number two, Bill number Broward County Affordable Housing.
Yes.
Lewis.
Broward County Board of County Commissioners, an act relating to Broward County, creating the Broward County Affordable Housing Improvement Act, providing definitions, authorizing the levy of a discretionary surtax to establish and finance affordable housing, specifying the cap for the rate of the surtax, specifying requirements for re-authorizing the discretionary surtax, specifying the documents and conditions under which the surtax applies, specifying the procedures the county must use before levying the surtax, requiring that surtax proceeds be deposited in the county's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, specifying authorized and prohibited uses of surtax proceeds, providing exceptions, providing an exception to general law, prohibiting the rehabilitation of housing owned by certain governments without a specified vote, requiring the Office of Program Policy Analysis and Government Accountability to review the discretionary surtax program at a specified interval and provide a report to the governor and legislature, and providing an effective date. That is the bill.
Thank you, sir. Representative Gottlieb, could you present your bill, please?
Thank you, Chair. So we heard a bad word. The bad word is surtax. We don't want to hear surtax. It's a dirty word. It's a bad word. But guess what? This is what we know. We have an affordable housing problem. We've heard that numerous times over. There are many people, read this on Sentinel. More than 40%, I'm sorry, yes, more than 40% of people's income is going to pay rent in Broward County. We heard from United Way today, and we heard about Alice. We have an affordable housing problem in Broward County. So we're going to say that bad word again, surtax. We want to add a 45% surtax to commercial property sold in Broward County. Guess what? They have that in Dade County, and it hasn't stopped development in any way, shape, or form. We want it here in Broward County. We want to help cure our affordable housing problem. That is the bill. That's what the bill does.
Thank you, sir. Representative Woodson?
Your microphone?
Representative Woodson, could you please turn on your mic?
My apology again. Thank you, Chair Gottlieb, for bringing this bill forward. We know that affordable housing is an issue, definitely. And working for Miami-Dade County for so many years, I know it's working in Miami-Dade County perfectly, and we need to address the issue in Broward as well. So I would support this bill 100%, and I look forward to working with you on this bill because our families in Broward County deserve better when it comes to affordable housing. We are living through a time where our younger generation cannot even afford to rent an apartment or a home, and they need to become homeowners. So if we provide affordable housing now, that's a way for them to save money and become homeowners as well. So thank you, Representative Gottlieb.
Speakers from the audience or comments from the audience?
Yes. Good afternoon again, delegation. Mr. Chair, thank you so much for that introduction to the bill, and thank you so much for filing this identical bill that you all supported last year. You know, the reality is, is that Broward County only receives 50 cents on the dollar that we send up to Tallahassee for affordable housing. And I won't go on because I know you all know this issue very well, and Representative Gottlieb so eloquently explained it. So I would just ask for your favorable support, and I'm here for any questions.
Any other speakers? Any other comments? Representative Gottlieb, could you please close on your bill?
I want to thank the Broward County Commission for bringing this bill forward two years in a row. Just ask my members for your favorable support. And with that, I'll close.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Knowles, could you please call the vote for the Bill of Broward County Affordable Housing?
Thank you. Broward County Affordable Housing Improvement Act, Senator Polsky, Senator Book, Senator Thurston, Senator Farmer, Senator Jones, Representative Lamarka. Okay, Representative Dubose, Representative Omfroy, Representative Hantrowski,
Yes.
Representative Daley,
Yes.
Representative Jenny, Representative Geller, Representative Woodson,
Yes.
Representative Robinson,
Yes.
Representative Fabrizio, Representative Bartman, Representative Barrero, Vice Chair Williams,
Yes.
Chair Gottlieb.
Yes.
So the bill passed?
And, mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. We're still at 10. So you're unanimous with members present.
Thank you, Ms. Knowles. Thank you, Ms. Knowles. That shows that the bill passed. Going to move forward to the next bill, calling Bill number one, Fort Lauderdale Downtown Development Authority.
Downtown Development Authority of the City of Fort Lauderdale, an act relating to the Downtown Development Authority of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, amending Chapter 2005-346, Laws of Florida, deleting expiration date of Chapter 2005-346, providing for transfer of assets upon dissolution pursuant to law, providing an effective date. That is the bill.
Thank you, sir. Representative Gottlieb, could you please present your bill?
Thank you, Chair. So, Members, this is a bill that I'm also equally excited to carry. We heard from Property Appraiser Care before about our largest city. That city is Fort Lauderdale. Fort Lauderdale is growing. It's blossoming. It's a beautiful city, but it can't, the Downtown Development District cannot grow if we don't help it. And what happens is, they have a sunset, which means they have a time limit on the amount of time that they can borrow money. That is set for 2023. No one's going to lend money to the City of Fort Lauderdale or to the Downtown Development Authority if they cannot borrow money past 2023. What this bill does is just waives that deadline. So we're asking for your favorable support for this great bill to help Fort Lauderdale move forward.
Thank you, sir. Any comments? Any questions from the audience?
I have a question.
Say your name, please.
My name is Bruce Cummings, and I live in downtown Fort Lauderdale, and I would like you to explain what this actually does for this particular committee.
Okay, I can answer that question, and if I don't answer to your satisfaction, there are other members here that would be happy to answer for you. But there is a Downtown Development Authority. The Downtown Development Authority helps to make improvements in, in, so I believe from the Hospital District North in what is called downtown Fort Lauderdale. And in order to make those improvements, they require the borrowing of money for the DDA. So right now, the DDA cannot borrow money past 2023. So what this bill does is allows them to continue to borrow money.
To do what? I mean, you're saying you're very, very general in terms of the improvements, and I don't mean to be a stickler, but I am a resident down there, and I'm aware that this is a group. And there are a lot of us that have very varied opinions about how this group is operating.
Okay, not a problem. It's, it's to make improvements, but I do have a representative from the Downtown Development District coming up behind you, so don't be scared. And that's John Millet.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, John Millet, General Counsel, Downtown Development Authority. Just, just briefly, as to the improvements we have outstanding, we own a large park right in the downtown Fort Lauderdale, Andrews and La Sola, it's Heisinga Plaza, and it's in need of revitalization. And we're going to spend really millions of dollars on that park, and that's a park that's open to the public for events, access to the Riverwalk. So that's one major improvement. And I'll just point out also, the DDA only taxes commercial property owners. The district does not tax residents. So this is really the commercial property owners raising a small millage to tax themselves. uh, to tax themselves, to come up with plan and improvement. So as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, we can't borrow against a twenty thirty deadline. Um, I'd also point out that periodically, the legislature has reviewed special districts, and we've been through that review process, and so it's really abnormal to have a, a really deadline date. So we're asking that you remove that so we can move forward. We, over the years, we've had a series of improvements, so um, this is, this is going to be an issue, uh, an ongoing. So we'd ask you to remove the expiration. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Representative Gottlieb, could you please close on your bill?
Uh, I just want to correct that I, I had said, and I appreciate Mr. Millage bringing it to my attention. I think I said that we could, it would be twenty twenty-three, and I meant twenty thirty. Sorry, I got a little dyslexic in my head there. Um, as a commercial property owner in downtown Fort Lauderdale, I support this bill and ask for everybody's favorable, uh, vote support.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Knowles, could you please call a roll for the vote of Fort Lauderdale Downtown Development Authority?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Book, Senator Thurston, Senator Farmer, Senator Jones, Representative Lamarcus. Representative Dubose, Representative Amfroyd, Representative Honchowski.
Yes.
Representative Daley.
Yes.
Representative Jenny. Representative Geller.
Yes.
Representative Woodson.
Yes.
Representative Robinson.
Yes.
Representative Fabricio, Representative Bartman, Representative Barrero, Vice Chair Williams. Chair Gottlieb.
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous with members present.
With the bill showing that it passed, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. So with that being, that, that'll close the, I'm sorry, I have, go ahead, Rep. Honchowski.
Thank you, Chair. I just had one question on item number eight. It was on our agenda through the end of the day Friday, and then was, uh, removed for next, uh, meeting. It's the Parkland Annexation, and I just wanted to ask, um, who requested that and why?
I, I don't mind. Actually, the City of Parkland requested it. There's an additional, um, item that's needed, and that vote in the commission is not coming up until after this meeting.
Follow-up?
Yes.
So it was the actual City of Parkland who requested not to, to vote on the annexation at this meeting?
At this meeting, it was actually Anthony Soroka, who's their counsel.
Okay.
You may continue if you wish.
Uh, no, I'm only asking because I know this is a negotiation point with something else going on in the city. So I just wanted to know who requested it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All, all about accountability and, uh, up here. So I think, um, as I was saying, that will conclude the bill portion of today's, um, delegation meeting, and we're going to move back to our speakers. We're on number nineteen, a virtual speaker, and Catherine Newton, if you are there. I'm sorry? I show eighteen is for November. My apologies, Catherine, if you can hold on one moment. We're on Margaret McGrath is, is a substitute, and I misunderstood. Margaret, please come forward. Catherine will be to you next.
Uh, good afternoon. I'm sorry. I thought I got my request in time. My name is Margaret McGrath, and I'm a resident of Lighthouse Point, and I'm here to discuss the need for plastics regulation. I'm representing myself and have a long-term view of being a good ancestor. Voluntary actions and recycling of plastic bags are insufficient to protect our health and our environment. Studies show that fewer than twelve percent of plastic bags are recycled, and recycled plastic often can't be recycled again. It's not convenient to recycle plastic bags because they clog machinery, and curbside recycling is not offered. That means more than eighty-eight percent of plastic bags are littered, landfilled, or incinerated with adverse effects on our health and our environment. The fleeting single use of plastic bags causes problems for decades, and that problem is increasing because plastic production is growing. Even just producing these bags creates greenhouse gases which contribute to the extreme weather variations that are now impacting the world. And plastics affect human life. That alarm has been sounded by Consumer Reports as well as by the Center for International Environmental Law. Micro particles are accumulating in human tissues and in our food chains, the soil, the water, the fish, and we don't yet know the full impact. The National Council of State Legislatures report that many states have taken action already. Big retailers are collaborating on Beyond the Bag, and an ounce of prevention really is less costly than a pound of cleanup. I am urging everyone in the delegation to strive to be a good ancestor and reduce the harm of future generations from the fleeting convenience of using plastic bags, either at the state level or by repealing the preemption on local action. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you did get your request in on time. I misread my, uh, my form. Thank you so much for presenting here today. And, um, our next speaker will be Catherine Newton with Oceana. Hi, Catherine.
Good morning, uh, afternoon now. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. My name is Catherine Newton, and I'm a Broward resident and the South Florida Field Representative for Oceana. Oceana is the largest international advocacy organization dedicated solely to ocean conservation. I'm here to ask you to co-sponsor Senate Bill three twenty and House Bill sixty sixty-three. Many municipalities in Florida want to take additional actions to reduce single-use plastics and polystyrene foam, but Florida has preemption laws that prevent them from passing certain policies. These bills would simply repeal the preemptions, giving local power back to municipalities. An estimated thirty-three billion pounds of plastic enter the ocean every year. That's roughly the equivalent of dumping two garbage trucks full of plastic into the oceans every minute. Plastic harms birds, sea turtles, and marine mammals. Plastic breaks up into tiny pieces called microplastics, which are eaten by fish. Plastic production is increasing at a rapid rate. Global production of plastics is now projected to nearly quadruple by twenty fifty. As plastic production increases, so will the amount of plastic entering the environment. Plastic is a climate issue as plastic is made from oil and gas. The Center for International Environmental Law issued a report identifying plastic as a major source of greenhouse gas emissions, producing nearly twice as much as the aviation sector. Reduction of plastic waste is now being included in many climate action plans, including Broward County's. Plastic is also bad for human health. In twenty eighteen, the American Academy of Pediatrics warned parents against serving their children drinks and food in Plastics Three, Six, and Seven. Plastic is an environmental justice issue as plastic production facilities are polluting low-income and minority communities. Waste management solutions cannot realistically keep up with the rising rates of plastic production. A Florida DEP report showed that only six percent of plastic bottles properly collected by waste management systems in our state were actually recycled. Some municipalities in South Florida have completely stopped recycling and instead incinerate all of their recyclables, which is environmentally harmful. Plastic litter is bad for tourism. It blights neighborhoods, fouls our parks and beaches, and clogs storm drains. So again, I ask you to please co-sponsor SB three twenty and HB sixty sixty-three. Thank you.
Perfect timing there. Seeing, uh, no questions. Looks like you covered all your material. Thank you so much, Ms. Newton, for always being an ardent advocate of our environment and Florida's oceans. Appreciate you coming today. And next, we have Al and Mary Mizell.
Before we continue, Chair.
Oh, I, yes, I apologize. Uh, members, we were noticed, um, till, I believe, noon. Obviously, we have gone on beyond noon. So just to, uh, be certain, if everybody will just take a quick voice vote, are we okay to continue today's meeting? Anybody objecting? Okay, so, uh, motion's been seconded. Now I'll call for a vote. Have one yai. Any other yais? Two, three, four? Okay, so we're going to continue? Sounds like we'll continue the meeting, and, uh, we will finish shortly. Mr. Mizell, sorry for interrupting you. Thank you so much.
No problem. Thank you, and good afternoon, delegation. We're Broward County citizens. We were at the first delegation meeting, and I spoke. We return today to continue addressing this serious issue of homelessness and the negative impacts of the public registry restrictions as they now exist. After the last meeting, our oldest daughter had to take me to the ER where I was hospitalized. If I'd been homeless when this happened, I might not be standing here today. We have many citizens who've been earmarked and placed on a public registry, a registry that continuously changes until it's become nothing but an instrument of continuing punishment for life, even after all debts to society have been paid. It's an instrument that's been shown to be costly and ineffective in its purposes. It's an instrument that's made thousands homeless, puts them in dangerous situations. This is my wife, Mary. You met her before. We've been married for sixty-one years. We have five grandchildren and six great-grandchildren. Now, as we age, we've looked into facilities where we can move as our needs change. As a registered citizen, we cannot find a single facility that met the twenty-five-hundred-foot living restriction, restriction from a park, a bus stop, a school, and so forth. This means there's almost no place in the entire county where a registered citizen can live indoors. Do you think that really improves public safety? We ask you to create legislation that will create educational programs that would use public funds on something that could actually be effective instead of expending them on the registry that's been shown to be completely ineffective with its ever-increasing punishments, such as the residency restrictions that are actually harmful to everyone's safety. Thank you.
I see any questions or comment. Now, Mr. Mizell, I appreciate you coming here. I'm a criminal defense lawyer. I've practiced for thirty years. I understand the harm that scarlet letters bring to, to many individuals, and I wish you luck in your fight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Linda Bloomfield, a virtual speaker. Ms. Bloomfield, are you present?
I am indeed. Thank you, sir. Um, good afternoon, everyone. My name, as stated, is Linda Bloomfield. I'm a resident of Florida. I live in Broward County in Hollywood. And like everyone else, I thank you for allowing me time to speak on this issue. I'm here today to ask the members of the Broward delegation to publicly and by vote to oppose House Bill seven five and Senate Bills five nine two, which addresses masking, and Senate Bill five nine four, which addresses COVID vaccines. I believe these bills are dangerous to our citizens' health and clearly yet another direct interference in home rule. House Bill seventy-five is called Limiting COVID-nineteen Restrictions, and it was filed on September eighth. On October thirteenth, Senate Bill four five two, Public Health, was filed as a companion bill and later withdrawn. It was replaced by the same senator with Senate Bill five nine two and Senate Bill five nine four, two bills addressing the same issues. Among the three bills, if passed, they would prohibit counties and municipalities from requiring citizens to wear a face covering. The law, if passed, would void any current mandates to do so. If passed, this would prohibit requiring people to submit to any medical procedure, like a vaccine or a treatment. It would prohibit requiring proof of vaccination or a vaccination passport for any reason whatsoever. It would prohibit publishing or sharing COVID-nineteen vaccination records. These laws would also, and we're all familiar with this now, prohibit school districts, school superintendents, and school principals from adopting or implementing or enforcing any face covering requirements in the schools. These laws would prohibit businesses from requiring customers to provide any documentation certifying their COVID-nineteen status, being vaccinated, or post-transmission recovery. We would not, businesses would not be allowed in any way to act against customers on the base.
You're, you're, you're breaking up.
COVID-nineteen vaccination status.
I'm not sure if you can hear me, Ms. Bloomfield. Number one, you're breaking up. Not, can you hear me now? Okay. My apologies, you're breaking up.
I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
You, you were breaking up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am. I can hear you. You're breaking up, and unfortunately, you're past your time. Um, so I thank you for your presentation. I will say, don't Howie in the hills my Broward. I'm not sure if anybody else here wants to make, yes. Representative Geller would like to give you another thirty seconds. Senator Polsky seconding that motion. I will give you another thirty seconds.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, basically, let me just wind up by saying, if these bills are passed, it would be as if there's no COVID in Florida, and we are totally to ignore this pandemic. The state legislature should not be in the practice of giving medical advice, let alone mandating mitigating strategies. So I urge all of you to vote no on these bills and encourage your colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Rep. Geller has a question, comment, or concern.
Very quick comment. Um, I agree with the, the speaker. The state of Florida should not be giving medical advice, and neither should the unqualified so-called surgeon general.
Apparently, Joe has jokes too. Okay. Seeing nothing more, we're going to move on to Rahad Cosme, National Youth Advocate Program. Ms. Bloomfield, thank you so much for your presentation today.
Good morning, Chairman Gottlieb, and also Broward County delegates. My name is Riad Cosme. I'm with the National Youth Advocate Program. We are the country's largest youth and family advocacy organizations, operating in ten states, serving well over seventeen thousand children, youth, and families. In particular to Florida, we have eight offices across the state, four here in South Florida, and even one in the chairman's district. As a member of the Florida Coalition for Children and a provider of Childnet here in Broward and also in Palm Beach Counties, you heard from Larry Ryan earlier, we are here to express our support for increased funding for case management services to ensure that direct care staff retention occurs through higher salaries and also with staff training. Specifically, case managers in Florida are paid twenty-two to thirty percent less than direct care staff in comparable states. That's not a hundred percent accurate for you guys here in South Florida, but we're going to go off the whole state. As a result of that, that leads to staff feeling unsupported and even causing burnout and very high turnover rates as a result of very high caseloads. To ask one of the, to answer one of the representatives' questions, our program in Jacksonville, actually, some of our case managers have twenty-five to thirty cases. So as you can tell, people get worn out and end up leaving. If we look at this, though, from an economic and budgetary standpoint, which I know we all have to do while also keeping those in mind that we serve, this high burnout and turnover of direct care staff causes higher disruption rates for children in care, which decreases smooth transitions and reunification for children and families. In other words, it's keeping kids in the foster care system, which is causing the state much more money than it needs to be spending. It is believed that with an upfront investment by the state, increasing case management rates, our organizations can pay more to and better train our direct care staff, which will lead to greater staff retention, which we know for a fact leads to better direct care services, which keeps children in their homes, with their families, and out of the system. Over time, we believe this would save the state's budget when it comes to child welfare by at minimum single-digit savings and possibly even double-digit savings. Thank you so much, and we know you guys have limited resources.
Mr. Cosme, thank you so much for coming here today and for taking the time to speak with me. Before, I look forward to hearing from you more in the future. Members, any questions or concerns? Seeing none, thank you so much. Now we'll have Linda Thompson Gonzalez, a virtual speaker. Linda, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me? Thank you. Good afternoon, Broward delegation. I'm Linda Thompson Gonzalez from Lauderdale by the Sea. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of SB three twenty and HR two twenty-sixty-three to repeal the pla, our plastic preemption. Almost every evening, Mario and I walk on the beach to clean up our plastic trash. Single-use plastic is littering our beaches, clogs our waterways, and landfills, kills our marine life, and threatens our tourists from the maritime industries along the East Coast. This is about one-point-six million jobs and a hundred-and-twenty-seven billion in GDP. But the real cost of single-use plastics is the impact of polystyrene on human health. These carcinogenic chemicals leach into foods that are packaged in it. In twenty eighteen, the World Health Organization reclassified polystyrene from possible to probable carcinogens. And the American Academy of Pediatrics warned parents use glass or stainless steel bottles and cups instead of plastics. With humans ingesting about seventy thousand. With humans ingesting about 70,000 plastic particles per year, that's about a credit card each week you're ingesting. One study put the economic cost of these hormone-disrupting chemicals for the U.S. population at about $340 billion a year due to the disease and dysfunction they cause. Polystyrene never really disappear. They degrade into microplastics with carcinogenic toxins that enter our food chain through water, soil, and air. Driven by the fossil fuel industry, plastic production is set to quadruple by 2050, increasing greenhouse gases and toxic pollution during the entire plastic lifecycle, from oil extraction to plastic production to disposal. With many alternative products now available that are comparable or even cheaper, over 20 municipalities in Florida, including Fort Lauderdale, have already passed ordinances to ban polystyrene foam and regulate their vendor purchasing policies. But the statewide plastic preemption limits local governments' ability to regulate this toxic material. If we care about human health, please... Yes. Thank you. If you care about human health, please support HR 6063 and Senate Bill 320, as so many of you did last session, to support this repeal bill. I won't list all your names, but repealing this preemption would be a, should be a priority for everyone concerned with our human health, our public health, and our well-being. And thank you to all who've supported this repeal in the past. I hope you'll do so again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any questions or concerns? No, not seeing any. Linda, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. And next, we have some of our great healthcare workers. And is Jason Morales here? Jason, come on forward, please. Does your team want to back you up so we can see all that purple in the house? All right, now? Come on now. Jason, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair.
Even with the mask on, you're recognized.
Just getting my notes. I wasn't expecting to come up so quickly. Good afternoon, everyone. It's good to see everyone in person. Finally, we're hoping this coming session, we're able to hunt you down in the halls of Tallahassee as well. So we're looking forward to that. My name is Jason Morales. I am a representative and a staff member from 1199 SEIU. For most of you that don't know, we represent healthcare workers throughout the state of Florida, the largest healthcare union in the state. We represent over 25,000 members and retirees here in the great state of Florida. We're here to actually to just express our feelings about HB 48, 48, HB 485, which is also Senate Bill 1132, which was introduced, voted on, passed, and signed last session. Of course, we met with a lot of folks during the summertime. And just to let you know that about, a little bit about this law for folks that we didn't meet with. So this law, as implemented for the last several months, hurts the care of our seniors in nursing homes by reducing the minimum staffing hours previously required by trained, experienced CNAs or certified nursing assistants, which is two and a half hours of direct care. So this new law allows workers with far less training to count toward these hours with providing difficult and delicate care for some of our oldest, most frail, vulnerable Floridians. These are our loved ones, right? Our parents, our grandparents, our neighbors. So for the past 20 years, the nursing home industry has made attempts to weaken safe, safety and quality each session. Last year, they succeeded with this new law and are sure to even more dangerous cuts this coming year. So this law was opposed by us, 1199 Healthcare Workers SEIU, the AARP organization, and other healthcare advocates who care about quality elder care. So this session, we ask that you take steps to protect seniors by restoring the staffing standard for CNAs. We know that 70% of nursing home funding resources come from public dollars. We ask that you insist in making sure that these dollars are being spent on quality elder care, and it begins with stabilizing the long-term workforce. And finally, our hospitals are in trouble. We're seeing a lot of folks leaving due to just pay, incentives, and most importantly, mental health. And so we ask that we work together to find a solution to kind of tackle this as quickly as possible as not only our residents or oldest residents are in danger, but we are as well. And so I'll leave it at that. We look forward again to seeing you guys in Tallahassee. If you guys have any questions, I'll be sure to answer them.
Jason, I want to thank you guys for coming here, for coming to our offices, for talking to us, for advocating on behalf of Florida's elderly population as you continue to always do. Very proud to support you. You guys will forever be my favorite campaign interview. It was great. Loved it. Any members have any questions or concerns, Rep. Panchowski, please?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for your advocacy. And I have been in touch with you since because in Finance and Facilities, we had an update on the PCA where we weren't getting really answers as to the effectiveness of the bill itself. And I want to thank you for reaching out. It was a little late, but for reaching out and continuing to work with us so that we can get the data to make sure that the bill is doing what it's supposed to be doing and that the money's going where it needs to be going. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Rep. We look forward to working with you. Absolutely.
Thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you, Chair.
Look forward to seeing you guys soon.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks again.
And next, I have Mayor Hazel Rogers. I believe that's a virtual. Ms. Rogers?
Mr. Chairman, how are you? I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Patricia Williams, and delegation members, it's good to be on this call this afternoon, and I'm here with a plea. Please help us. Please help our cities to right a wrong, and I'm telling you about this wrong. I need you to help us to provide the same protection granted to HOAs and condo associations under State Statute 2718 and 720 as we protect the integrity of residential properties and residential communities. I am speaking to H. House Bill 403. And I know you're familiar. You just have some on, some work left to be done. We have to take this back to Tallahassee because we cannot afford that certain communities, those that are protected by HOAs and condos, they are protected by law. But we have other areas of our cities that the integrity of those properties and those communities, keeping communities safe, is at risk. I will share with you my biggest concern as it relates to the type of businesses that are permitted in single-family communities as home-based business. Maybe you did know. It caught me by surprise, and I'm going to assume it caught you by surprise also, that you can sell ammunition from your condo, from your homeowners association, from your town, from your, let me tell you, your multifamily units. Your, we call those your townhomes that you have. They're not mandatory homeowners association, but they're multifamily units, and you don't know who's upstairs or downstairs or beside you that is selling ammunition. How do we protect my law enforcement, my professionals when they respond to an emergency in that community? So I'm here asking you to help us right a wrong because all residential communities should have the same protection. I believe that, and I know you do. So there's no reason to leave some of us more vulnerable than the others. So here we go, colleagues. I am calling on you. I'll be heading to Tallahassee if I have to, to make sure our voices are heard and that of those that need us most, that have no other protection than local government. And we need to hear your voice, and I look forward to your comments.
Thank you so much for your passion. Looking around the room, I'm not seeing any question. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. I have two reps who wish to address you. I'm first going to call my vice chair.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Rogers, for bringing this to our attention. Are you stating now that certain areas have the right to sell firearms out of their homes?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair. Anywhere in Northgate, you're familiar with the city of Florida Delitz. So I'll name Northgate, Oakland Estates, Eastgate, you can sell ammunition. We have a request for a license to sell ammunition in the city of Florida Delitz that is pending right now.
Yes. Is it any way possible for a local bill to be put forward to prevent that from happening before we can actually change the law in Tallahassee?
Mayor Rogers, did you?
I, I, I don't know how to answer that question. I'm just asking you to fight. I don't know if everyone truly did understand that bill that was passed, that it truly does not protect or give us a safety net that we need to know that our homes are safe, that someone is not going to be just doing the wrong things. Selling guns and ammunition in a residential community is not safe, not safe for law enforcement, and it's not safe for our residents. So we need the same protection offered and protected by Statute 718 and 720 to be afforded to every residential community in the state of Florida.
Mayor Rogers, I would be willing to do anything that I can to assist in that. I think that's very dangerous to us as a society, even coming down to putting a local bill forward if we can't change the law in Tallahassee. I'm willing to work with you on that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
I have two other members who wish to address you. First was Rep. Panchowski.
Hello, Mayor Rogers. First of all, I want to thank you for always standing up for the cities with the local voices, local choices. And I know that this bill also has a county element to it. So are you also working with the Florida League of Cities as well as the Florida counties on this?
Okay, I know my attorneys, they're working with the attorney side of it. I know my, one of my, my colleague is the president of Broward Legal Cities, and we have had discussions recently with our lobbyists. So we will be pursuing a resolution, and I just wanted to bring this to the attention of the delegation.
Thank you so much.
I thank you very much, and great job.
Rep. Lamarcus?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Mayor Rogers, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you? Loving Tallahassee?
I'm good. So question I had, I wanted to clarify because I heard two, two questions being asked. And then one, and then kind of both were answered. Are you saying that through House Bill 403, people can purchase ammunition or firearms or both?
They can, they can sell firearm, meaning ammunition. Let's be, let me be specific as to the request in, of my city, and it has to do with ammunition sale. And they want to be able to sell ammunition. There was no restrictions or no protection as it relates to what can be, you know, what can, how can they protect the public as it relates to guns and ammunition sale in a residential community?
Okay, but I just want to be very clear because this is a very important issue to me as, as well it is you. As a former city commissioner and a county commissioner, my neighborhood's important, just like yours. Are you saying that under House Bill 403, people can purchase and sell out of their residence firearms or ammunition or both?
They can do. I know for sure they can do both because there was no protection when that, when we, it was voted upon that protected us from having guns and ammunition sold in a residential community. So it can be done representative. Yes, it can be done.
Okay, thank you. I, I want to do some due diligence myself as far as the ammunition versus firearms, but there was also licensing required to do that. But it's, it's an issue that's concerned to me as well. So I think this whole delegation wants to find out the answers.
Okay, we look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
And I still have two more. Don't go where, as, as, the more you speak, the more we seem to have some questions. So first on my list was Rep. Geller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nice to see you, Mayor. Always nice to see one of my legislative mentors. I just want to say that we support you, speaking for myself, and I'm sure most of my constituents. We support you completely on this. We have a terrible scourge of gun violence across our country. Anything we can do to make anybody safer in their communities and anything that we can get through to help restrict what I view as some kind of evidence of insanity, I'm all for. And I appreciate you bringing this to us, and I certainly hope that we can assist your community, you and all of us, in getting something done about this. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Representative. Thank you. Looking forward to working with you and everyone. I know you would, most people did not know. We only got the information and focused on it because a request came to our city. So our city attorney and all of us, we are working together to see what we can bring before the delegation to see how we can protect all of our residential communities, not just those that are living in condo association, mandatory association, or homeowners association. We need everyone to feel safe in their homes.
And Mayor, we have Representative Robin Bordelman has some questions or concerns.
I, I agree with you, Mayor Rogers. I did not support that bill out of fear of what it would do for our communities, but I think we need to defer to our delegation attorney to help us with this matter. There is a state statute that preempts local municipalities from banning the sale of weapons, et cetera. I know the city of Westbin and some other cities are in a lawsuit. It's at the appeals court. And I'm assuming that the reason why this is happening now is because we're allowing businesses in the homes. So we need to just figure out about, figure out how, how that works.
Okay, we're doing more work. We have a new development in my city, and we are working with that homeowners', that homeowners association to make sure they protect the residents of the city, and we're using whatever motive we can to get the, to provide protection for everyone.
The attorney didn't hear the question. Hold on. So, so the question is, I support what Mayor Rogers is doing. What I want to know is how, when you look at that in the big picture, because the state has preempted local municipalities from limiting the sale of guns. There's a huge lawsuit that's been on the books for years. The city of Westbin, Dan Daley, Mayor Sturmer brought it forward that says you can't stop it, but because now this bill allows home businesses with limited regulation within people's houses, how does that bill, how does that bill work? And then how can we, can there be a carve-out for the homes? Or would that state statute stop us from doing that? Because it is something that we need to address this session. And I think it would help all of us as to how that would work.
I will say that I don't know that it's within the province of our local council to answer that question, but if he feels capable to answer.
In fact, thank you, Chair. I don't believe it actually. It is my, I don't believe it's actually in my purview, but nevertheless, I don't have it before me, the, the language of the actual bill. And without reading it or comparing it to what the current legislation is, with Chair's permission, can't answer that further at this time.
Okay, I think if, I just think all of us are incredibly concerned, especially Vice Chair Williams. And we want to get the information to see what can be done on a legislative, during this legislative session. So whatever you can do to help us. Thank you.
Perhaps if it's an issue of such great concern, we can all talk offline and do a workshop maybe in December.
That would be...
Something that we can perhaps look forward to. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is awesome. I just wanted to bring it to your attention. We might have missed something, but we can, we can make some noise, okay? We must protect our residents.
Thank you so much. I think we all agree. It's of grave concern with home-based businesses and the bill that was passed that this might be what many of us would consider to be a loophole that's worth closing. Appreciate you so much for bringing that to our attention. And I know with my members being concerned, we'll likely look forward to addressing that in the near future.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, the last person on our agenda is a Ms. Ellen Drotschler from the Lighthouse of Broward. Ms. Drotschler, are you, I have you as being present in the room? Ms. Ellen Drotschler, if you're not here... Ms. Ellen Droitzer, if you're not here, I will ask if there is anybody else in attendance that's not scheduled that would like to address the Broward delegation. Not hearing or seeing from anybody, I want to thank my members who attended and who stayed. We know it's a very big time commitment. I want to again thank the MPO for hosting us and doing such a wonderful job with the logistics of getting this done. I want to thank our aides and staff, my staff in particular, for bringing the Dunkin' Donuts. Thank you so much. And everybody else's staff who came and participated and does all the hard work behind the scenes that makes all of us look great. With that being said, our next public hearing of the Broward delegation is Tuesday, November 9th, 2021, at the wonderful JAFCO facility. Sorry, Joe. It is in Sunrise, Florida, 5100 North Nob Hill. I think it should be Nob Hill Road. Yes, Joe. Joe, we're, we're taking a tour of Broward County, and we'd like to bring you to northwest. It's a little west. But Joe, it's, it's in the beautiful JAFCO illuminate ballroom. Yes, and I think in December, we'll do something in Hollywood. In December, we'll, we'll shoot to do something in Hollywood. But this one is in Sunrise, Florida, 5100 Nob Hill Road, illuminate ballroom, Sunrise, Florida, 33351. The start time is 4:00 PM, so you'll have plenty of time to get there. I've got, I've got a couple of questions. One more announcement. This is for my members. Tomorrow morning, the 27th, at 9:30 AM, the Broward League of Cities is going to be hosting a workshop. I believe that's virtual. It is virtual. So if you haven't, we will send a link to it if you haven't received it already. And then I had Rep. Lamarcus had a question or concern.
Thank you, Chair. And for those who don't mind going, staying east, Hollywood, California, or Florida, the boat show is starting this Wednesday, but more importantly, on today's business, I'm, I'm not a little, I'm very disappointed that a lot of us make this effort. Those that are here make this effort, and everyone has a reason or an excuse. But if we're going to have these meetings, people should show up, or, or else just let's not have meetings. I mean, I, you, you've been east-west, north-south, and we know Representative Geller by his, by his words and his complaints and concerns about traveling all around Broward County, doesn't, doesn't mind going around Broward County, but it is, it's disappointing to come here and know we have, we have one senator here today, probably the one senator who had plenty of reasons not to be here. And I just think it's, it's really disappointing if people are electing people that aren't showing up. It's, this is my time, it's your time, it's your time, it's everyone's time. I know not everyone's close to these meetings. So I would encourage everyone to please start attending the delegation meetings. And I know, I would notice, note that I have two folks in my caucus that aren't here, and I know they travel a long way. If we're going to do business, we should do business.
And I want to, I want to address that because number one, I agree with you, and I do thank you for attending. I will tell you that as Chair, I do hear from some of the members who didn't attend, and I, I don't want to be in a position of defending anybody. I know that Senator Farmer is dealing with a family issue, and Senator Book had a medical procedure. So that's the reason those who aren't there, I can't speak for the rest, but I do agree with you. This is part of our elected duty, and I know that it's hard for many of us. I'm missing a day at work, and, and many of us are missing other obligations to be here. But I am very proud that we did have, for the majority of the day, 11 of us here. And I do appreciate your commitment to coming to each delegation meeting, Rep. Lamarcus. And Rep. Geller, I hear your concerns loud and clear. I apologize for making fun. I will speak with Ms. Knowles and ensure that should we do something in December, we will be doing it south and closer to those of our members who are on our, our southern border. And one more, we have one more. Let's not leave if we can. We have Vice Chair Williams with a brief concern.
With that said, Mr. Chair, those 11 that have attended the meeting today, I want to say thank you for coming to my district to have this great meeting, and thanks to MPO for allowing us to be here.
And with that, our meeting is done.